The meeting of the Isle of Wight School Board is hereby called to order. And the clerk shall take the roll.
Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Wooster.
Present.
Mr. Colick.
Present.
Mr. Marsh.
Present.
And Mrs. Tynes.
Now, we will have the approval of the agenda or amendments to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to add reorganization impacting the Finance Committee to the agenda.
It does take considerable thought to explain your reasoning. For that, I thank you. And finally, thanks to everyone for coming out tonight to support our students, our staff, and our administrators as we strive to take Isle of Wight County schools to the next level in educating our youth. Now, the Vice Chair will lead us in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next on the agenda, we will have the Isle of Wight Achievers.
You're first to go. That always happens. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that participated in our Go Red today. In honor of American Heart Health Month, we did Isle of Wight County Schools Goes Red. So you'll see a lot of red onstage and in the audience. And we appreciate those that participated in helping to bring awareness to heart health. The vision for Isle of Wight County Schools is to create a learning environment that will enable every child to discover his or her unique gifts and talents. The Isle of Wight Achiever section of our board meeting gives us an opportunity to recognize and celebrate our students and staff for their unique talents and gifts. And our first honoree tonight comes from Smithville High School. Smithville High School basketball icon Vivian Green's legacy continues to grow. So as I read about her, I'm going to ask Ms. Vivian Green-Brown to please come forward, Dr. Coleman, if you'll come help out. In November, Vivian was inducted into the Hampton Roads Sports Hall of Fame. Vivian currently serves as the first female assistant coach to the Smithville High School Boys Basketball Team. The 1969 through 74 Smithville High School basketball standout set six state records her senior year. In 1975, her freshman year of college, Green was named Most Valuable Player at the first ever NCAA Women's Basketball Tournament, earning her the honor of becoming the first female athlete to receive a three-year full tuition scholarship to Norfolk State University. To this day, she holds the school record for career points at 2,386 and scoring average at 25.1 points per game, earning all CIA honors in each of her four years at NSU. Her most memorable performance may have come as a junior against Shaw University when she made 23 field goals en route to a 50-point game. By 1979, she'd been drafted to play professionally in the Women's Basketball League, which was a forerunner to today's WNBA. She was the first Norfolk State athlete, male or female, to have her jersey retired and also had her jersey retired at Smithville High. And we have a little collage of photos here from Ms. Viv. We've got in the bottom center, that's her Smithville High School playing days. And the top, you can see her wearing her Norfolk State jersey. Over to the right, that's when she was in the Women's Basketball League with, I believe that was Dayton. Is that right, Vivian? So she was with Dayton. And you can see the top left where she had her jersey retired at Smithville High School. And as I said, she was recently inducted into the Hampton Roads Sports Hall of Fame. So we are proud to celebrate the accomplishments of Vivian Green-Brown, and we thank you for continuing to give back to your community. Thank you, Vivian. And I know Ms. Tynes has something to hand you as well.
Vivian, because of this young lady, I'm here standing for you tonight in this capacity of school board member. Vivian redirected my life in 1970. She was a senior at Smithville High School, and I guess I was a junior. I brought it in class in 1975. And again, I'm going to tell Vivian, thank you, Vivian. She is all about redirecting people's lives. She's all about being a role model for the young people and the community. And Vivian, thank you for all you have done for Isle of Wight County. You made us famous.
We're going to move on to our Seniors of the Month. Our first Senior of the Month is from Windsor High School. And the Senior of the Month for February from Windsor High School is Kylie Newberry. Kylie has a natural curiosity and a strong work ethic. She asks thought-provoking questions, is driven to seek her own answers, and has the ability to take charge in situations when necessary. She performs quality, timely work, and is able to balance her school, home, and work life effortlessly. Kylie is a quiet individual, to which others gravitate. She is a good friend to many and is often sought out for her ability to listen. She also sees all sides of the discussion, which allows her to empathize and guide her peers when they seek her advice. Quote, "Although I only taught her for one semester, she is the one that I will never forget because of her kindness towards everyone." And that's for Mrs. Halsted, her AP Government teacher. Kylie hopes to narrow her focus of study while exploring the many options at Tidewater Community College in the fall. And we congratulate Kylie. Congratulations. And our Senior of the Month from Smithville High School is Kevin Parker Jr. Kevin is a well-rounded student-athlete. He is polite, intelligent, outgoing, and a positive role model for his peers. Kevin is a hard worker who has set high academic goals for himself. He has been a member of the football and basketball teams for the past four years, and he was named to the All Academic First Team in Basketball. Kevin has been an influential force within the classroom this semester and always gone above and beyond, both in class and outside. Kevin is goal-oriented and committed to giving his all in everything he does. And that comes from English teacher Mr. Lonacki. Kevin plans to attend a four-year college and study to become an electrical engineer. I also believe Kevin's grandparents both work for us, Mr. Lee and Ms. Lee, if y'all would like to stand. Mr. Lee's one of our drivers. And Ms. Lee serves as a substitute nurse for us, so thank y'all very much. It's nice to see a family, involved family here. Thank you. All right. Next, we have a little shout-out for our board members. If you want to have a seat a minute, I'll call you back. February has been designated as School Board Appreciation Month in Virginia. As citizen leaders, school board members face complex and demanding challenges, yet few people fully understand the scope and far-reaching implications of board members' responsibilities. Tonight, we would like to recognize the vital contributions of our school board members and focus attention on the crucial role these elected public officials play in the education of our children. Their job is to establish a vision for the education program, design a structure to achieve that vision, ensure schools are accountable to the community, and strongly advocate continuous improvement in student learning. That job entails an endless string of meetings and school functions to attend, lengthy reports, agendas, proposals, and other information to read and study, and a host of difficult decisions to make. The time spent in board meetings represents just a small fraction of the hours school board members spend leading the division. They also work hard at seminars and training sessions to keep informed of the latest trends in educational leadership, are deeply involved in community activities, and spend time in the schools and at extracurricular events. Their love for learning and concern in caring for students, staff, and community drives our board members' desire to lead so students can achieve. In recognition of the dedicated service of school board members throughout Virginia, February has been designated as School Board Appreciation Month. This is the time to show our recognition and to increase our understanding of how local board members work together to provide a better future for our children. Tonight, we want each of you to know that your hard work has been noticed and is truly appreciated. Chairman John Colick from District 5, Vice Chairman Jason Marsh from District 4, Denise Tynes from District 1, Michael Cunningham from District 3, and Mark Wooster from District 2. Congratulations and thank you. All right. In addition, February 13th through 17th is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And in honor of this week, we are recognizing our clerk, Jessica Whitlow, and Deputy Clerk Crystal Briggs tonight. And I'm going to ask if they would please come down on the floor. And we have a little something for them. Board clerks are tasked with maintaining accurate records of school board meetings and official acts, but they are more than record keepers for the board. They make sure the board has the materials necessary for their meetings in a timely manner. They serve as a point of contact for parents, employees, and the community on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and they work additional hours attending meetings, like tonight. We would like to thank Jessica and Crystal for their dedication and service to the School Board of Isle of Wight County. Thank you so much. And Mr. Elliott's going to get a picture. And with that, we conclude the Isle of Wight Achievers for tonight.
And next, we will have Eye on Instruction, Carrollton Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Nico, and we are the Carrollton Cardinals. We are Mrs. King's third grade class. We would like to present something we have been working on in music class.
Hello. Hello. My name is Emerson. Our drive-in question for our school song, I mean, project was, how can we work together to write a school song to write our 30th year at Carrollton?
Hello. My name is Riley. Writing a school song took a lot of planning. Ms. Wallace helped us go through the process. First, we had to choose a tune for our song. This wasn't easy. Due to copyright rules, we had to be very careful.
Hello. My name is Lily. Ms. Wallace let us listen to a lot of different songs. We loved hearing some college-bite songs and some songs from other schools, but it was time to vote. We needed to decide what tune would be used for our Carrollton school song.
Hello. My name is Luke. We finally had a winner. We decided to write this song to the tune of Take Me Out to the Ballgame. We are ready to start writing.
Hello. My name is Alvin. Writing our s-
Hello. My name is Alvin. Writing our song was not easy. We had lots of opinions. Ms. Wallace took us to the writing process. We brainstormed, wrote, and edited. We broke into two groups to work on each part for each on the song. It was hard, but we kept going.
After we wrote the song, we had to decide on a title. We chose CAES. Our song was complete, and we were ready to record.
We were so excited to have the chance to record with, to go to Smithfield High School and record with the band. Thank you, Mr. Sorrell and Ms. Gale, for making this happen.
We are Carrollton Cardinals. We must be daring kinds. We follow the rules that keep us safe. We make good choices and lead the way to our best. That's what CAES. If you're ugly, it's a shame. So let's all get ready to learn in CAES.
Hello. My name is-
Hello. My name is Aubrey. We would like to share our song with our community.
Hello. My name is Aubrey. We would like to share our song with our community. After our presentation, we would share hard work with our fellow Cardinals. Our song, along with AQR code to perform, will be displayed at CAES.
Thank you for listening to our presentation. Do you have any questions?
Very well done. Thank you very much.
Test, test. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
Next, Dr. Coleman and Mr. Christensen are going to introduce Mr. Aaron Hawkins, who will share the results of the FY22 School Division Audit.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. Wanted to take the time to introduce Mr. Aaron Hawkins. But before, let's give you some information that led up to this. We had a audit last school year, and we actually posted those results in December. Once those results were posted, the school board requested that we get a member from the auditing team to come out and explain in a little bit more detail concerning the audit for IWCS. So we have with us today Mr. Aaron Hawkins from Robison Farmer Cox Associates. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, sir. I hope that everyone can hear me. I'm talking to the doctor. I'm stopping. Otherwise, I'm going to keep talking. So, you know, for the process, if we begin, we were hired across the county. For the FY21 audit, that was our first year auditing the county. And when we're selected, you know, there's a RFP process that goes out, and different firms submit proposals, and then there's an interview process, and then we are hired by the county to perform the audit. And we have to audit the school board because you are a component unit of the county. And you fall under their audit as well as theirs. And so when we begin the audit for the year, for the fiscal 22-year audit, we typically send out planning information in the spring to both the county and the school board and other departments. And we do about a week of what we call preliminary field work, usually in May or June. And, you know, when we did our preliminary field work, I think the prior finance director was from FY21 was no longer there, but there was still some other staff that had been a part of the audit process from the previous year. So our preliminary field work went, you know, relatively good. You know, we do a lot of what we call controls testing in the spring. We do that preliminary work. You know, we select 40 random checks that were written during the year. We also select all the largest checks that were written during the year. We make sure that, you know, for every payment, for all those payments that we selected, that documentation was the way it was supposed to be. Everything was posted the way it was supposed to be. You know, the right people signed the checks that were supposed to sign the checks. And same thing for some of other controls testing that we do for other areas, revenues, things like that. And so the preliminary field work went pretty well. And then, you know, during the summer was when we audit your school activity funds, which I think I presented that, the results of that to you probably early September or so. And then, we're supposed to come back to do our final field work in the fall, which is when all the numbers for the year should be finalized. You know, everything should be reconciled, and basically, you know, the county and the school board say, hey, these are our numbers. These are our amounts for the year. Your job is to come in and tell us, are these numbers correct? Or is anything wrong? That's kind of put it in layman's terms, simplicity. But that's what our testing is supposed to do. And so when we came back for final field work, we were kind of met with some difficulties because there'd been a lot of turnover that had occurred between, you know, when we did our preliminary field work and when we were doing our final field work. There was basically no one in the finance department that had had any real involvement during the year for the school board. And so, you know, needless to say, the school board really wasn't ready for us to do all our work at that time. And it took a lot of effort from folks at the county to kind of help you guys get to a point where we could audit numbers. And thankfully, we did get to that point. But it was a bit of a struggle. And that's kind of, to give you just a summarize of really where things left off with FY22 audit was really just keeping your finance, getting the finance staff in place and keeping them in place as best you can. You know, and everyone deals with turnover. It's not just you all, but those are the kind of complications that can happen, especially, you know, in the finance department. But we did end up getting through the audit and getting to a point where we met the state's deadline of getting them audited financial statements by December 15th. So that's a good thing. To talk about the, you know, when you pick up the county's financial report, the school board's financial statements are typically towards the back. You know, I know I'm not sharing my screen right now, and I don't know if anyone even has the financial reports in front of them, but if you wanted to jot down these notes, if you're looking at a PDF, I believe it's PDF page 235. And 211 would be, if you're looking at a hard copy, the number at the bottom of the page, you know, of the actual page. And that's where the school board's fund statements would begin. So they are included in those county financial statements. We did issue a separate management letter. It's separate from the audit itself and the financial statements. You know, I want to be clear that, you know, our financial statements, our financial statements that were audited had an unmodified opinion, which means that based on our testing, the financial statements can be relied upon. So we did get to a good point and feeling comfortable about the numbers in the report. This management letter that we sent out separately, you know, it kind of identifies things that, you know, while they didn't rise to a material level of, you know, or I shouldn't say, there was nothing that caused the financial statements to be materially misstated that weren't corrected. You know, we could include them in this letter. And the first of which, there was three items on our management letter, the first of which was on school board reimbursement requests. And this had to do with the turnover, honestly, like, you know, the immense turnover that occurred. You all get several federal grants, and this year particularly, you got a ton of COVID-related federal assistance in the form of ESER funds. And, you know, you all had spent a lot of money up through June 30th, and a lot of it hadn't been requested for reimbursement yet. It was sort of sitting up, you know, we spent all this money. It was actually to the tune of about $3.6 million. You know, this is money that we spent. The money's gone out of our bank account. We spent it. We have to do these reimbursement requests and send them off to the state so that we can get reimbursed by them with federal dollars to reimburse- with federal dollars to, to reimburse ourselves for this money that we spent. And, um, you know, because of that turnover, that, that wasn't occurring. And so, um, it did get, ended up getting requested, you know, at, you know, towards the end of the audit process. And so the money did end up, I believe, coming in and, um, was requested successfully. But, um, you don't want to wait that long, you know, for, for, to request funds. Typically, you know, with a big grant program, i- it should really be done monthly, um, definitely no less than quarterly. Uh, we had another management letter item that we indicated, you know, the, what I kind of already have told you is, is, you know, trying to maintain your finance department staff. You know, it's, um, you need to have someone in place that can, that can make, you know, not only day-to-day operations, but also, um, be able to handle the year-end fiscal responsibilities of the school board. And with that not being in place, that, you know, we just wanted to kind of, you know, put, put that in, in this management letter, that it is something you need to be aware of. It's something that you need to, to remedy. And on the second page of the management letter, um, this is the third item, and this really affected the county and the school board. You know, when we, when we show up for our final fieldwork, and I kind of have said this earlier as well, um, it's, really what should happen is the county and the school board say, hey, here's our financial statements. These are our numbers. Tell us if they're right or wrong. Um, when that process started, uh, the numbers kind of kept changing on us. You know, we were getting journal entries from both the county and the school board for things that, hey, we haven't, we forgot to record this, or we still need to record this and do this. And so that while they weren't entries that I was having to do, um, so I was independent of these journal entries, um, you know, that they weren't recorded yet when I started the audit. And, and, you know, it's hard. It makes the audit process complicated and a little bit inefficient when, um, like I said, you, we're, we're obtaining numbers. We're trying to audit them, and then the target kind of keeps moving on us. Um, so that was, that was the third item that, uh, that I noted on the management letter. And, um, and that's, and that really is the, the main highlights of, of, of the audit process and, and how it went in FY22. Um, I'm willing to answer any questions that anyone has to the best of my ability.
Does anybody have any questions? No questions. No, we have no questions. That was, uh, very good, very concise, and it answered all the questions that I had.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a nice student.
Okay, next we've got the Bridebrand Presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, my school staff. I am, uh, Don Robertson with County Administrator's Office. And I have been asked to give you a brief update on broadband expansion in the county.
So I will endeavor to be very brief, uh, but certainly I'm willing to answer any questions that you might have relative to, uh, the county's broadband efforts. When I was growing up, I had a camera. We'd take a picture, and, uh, it'd be a little thing that rolled out, a little piece of paper, and you'd sit there. And it was a blank piece of paper for a long time. And you'd wait, and you'd have to shake it. And after a few minutes, uh, images would start to appear on that piece of paper. This process is much like that process. Uh, we have been working behind the scenes for about the last two or three years now, uh, relative to broadband expansion in the county. Um, and if I had a dollar for every call that I've gotten over that time period asking, when is broadband coming to my house? I could probably retire today. Uh, but we are still working on that process. Uh, the image is still unfolding. And, uh, to make a long story short, uh, we have been able to secure federal as well as state grant funds. Uh, federal, uh, funding is provided through the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. We call it ARDOF. Uh, state funding is through the Virginia Technology Initiative, or VODI funds as we call them. And so Isle of Wight County is currently participating in a regional project with the city of Suffolk uh, and Southampton County. Uh, this is well over a thirty million, I think it's about thirty-four million dollar project, uh, between our three communities. Uh, several thousand homes will be served. And at the end of the process, it's expected that every home in Isle of Wight County, as well as the other surrounding communities, will have the opportunity to subscribe to broadband service. What we are currently engaged in is the actual construction phase. Uh, and in Isle of Wight, we are at the very beginning of the construction phase. Uh, so if you go to parts of the county south of Route four sixty, you'll probably see some trucks. You may see some conduit, and you'll see some folks out working. Uh, they're in the process of laying conduit. Uh, most of the construction currently is occurring underground. Once the conduit's in place, they'll come back and actually place fiber in the conduit. Uh, and then there's several other steps in the process where they, uh, test the conduit after they've made connections. Uh, they'll electrify everything, and then they'll begin to supply service to homes. We expect to receive fiber to the home, uh, which is literally the state-of-the-art, uh, the best possible service that we can provide to homes in Isle of Wight County. The process, the construction process is probably still going to take another, uh, two, two and a half years. Uh, and so there's going to be a lot of folks shaking that paper, uh, wondering when that image is going to come into full view. Uh, but the process is occurring. Uh, there is a good amount of work that's already been done in the city of Suffolk, and then they've moved west, west to Isle of Wight County. Uh, and so as they begin to build out, uh, in some of our more rural communities south of four sixty, uh, they'll begin to move north and west. There, now, there is a portion of our county, uh, because all of the, the homes that I've kind of described are being served by Charter Communications. So if you see a truck with Spectrum or Charter or some of their subs, that's going to be the bulk of what occurs in Isle of Wight, and they'll be the providers for most of the homes in Isle of Wight. There is a small portion of our county, in the western part of the county, uh, on the Mill Swamp area that goes all the way up to Rushmere and then east to about Rensmille Estates. Uh, that area will be served by Rural Band. Rural Band is a subsidiary of Prince George Electric Co-op. At the end of the day, everybody's service is pretty much going to be the same. It's going to be fiber to the home, state-of-the-art ser, a state-of-the-art service, uh, for all of those homes that currently do not have broadband. Uh, I'll point out one last thing, and then certainly if you have questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Affordability is a major consideration. You know, everybody wants broadband. Everybody, certainly during COVID, understood the need for broadband. Uh, but there is a cost. And for many homes, in a traditional sense, it would be unaffordable. But because of the funding sources that we have secured with federal and state funds, and the way that the grant programs are rolled out, affordable programs have to be offered to homes. Um, and so we'll be working with families as we go through the process to, uh, obviously qualify people and make sure that they are eligible for those reduced rates. Uh, literally, it may be at no cost to some households. Uh, but most households will be able to get high-speed broadband service at a very affordable cost. And with that, I'll pause and certainly answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Tynes.
Um, thank you. Mr. Roberts, I just want to ask the question, and I know it's probably no, but I just want to know. Um, I, I notice a lot of concerns, especially on social media, where people that are moving here and, and that are living here. Of course, we're in a rural area. Uh, we don't have a lot of choices when it comes to cable. As far as TV services, right now, you know, it's pretty much, uh, Spectrum, uh, unless you want to download things. Um, what do you see, uh, in the future as far as us getting other options in the county?
So Isle of Wight has always welcomed any other provider who would like to come in. Uh, the challenge with that is any provider who comes in is going to have to come in and provide their own infrastructure. It's a very expensive proposition. And I, I would submit to you that without the subsidized funding that we're getting relative to the federal and state grants, we wouldn't be having this conversation about broadband expansion right now. Uh, so there is certainly the possibility, but the likelihood is very low that there would be other providers to come in and provide TV service. And one of the beauties of broadband internet is that you have a multitude of streaming services at your disposal uh, that provide either subscriptions that have a fee associated, uh, and some streaming services are free to the customer. Uh, and so I think most homes will probably gravitate more toward those streaming services. If you look at national statistics over the last several years, uh, there's been a downward trend as it relates to cable TV as we historically have known it.
All right.
And an uptick in streaming services.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Cunningham?
I've got a question on the timeframe. Uh, I don't know if anybody else is wondering. When is, uh, when do you think the first customer will be able to use broadband in the county?
That's a great question. I wish I had a great answer.
Okay.
Uh, the, 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 we are already seeing customers in Suffolk come online. Uh, as I noted, construction is beginning in Isle of Wight. So the process of getting the conduit in the ground, getting the fiber in, getting that fiber to the point where they can then, uh, provide service to homes takes several months. My really loose guess is that late spring, early summer, we'll start to see homes coming online in Isle of Wight. And, and, I mean, in a significant way in terms of, uh, you know, probably several hu- hu- hundred homes coming online in a relatively short period, once they get that infrastructure in the ground.
Okay. Thank you.
But don't hold me to that, because that's the call I get every day.
Yeah, no problem. I'm not going to hold you to it.
I'll let you know when Carisville gets it.
Carisville will get it sooner than many because, again, they're starting in the southern part of the county. And, uh, part of that is because Southampton is also a partner in this grant. And so as they move from Suffolk to Isle of Wight to Southampton, uh, they'll be coming through your neighborhood in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. And if, uh, you know, you need an update in the future, I'll be more than glad to come back and provide you updates.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have citizens comment on agenda items.
In accordance to policy BDDH-dash-E, presentation of information on any subject will be concluded at the discretion of the board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time for their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking are asked to be specific, state the issues for the board's consideration, and attach a copy of your prepared remarks. If you have prepared remarks, they should be given to the board clerk. Please do not approach the board members. Any matter relating to specific students will be heard by the school board only in a closed session. Okay, first we have Jerry Tenney.
I came here to speak, but I must tell you, I was inspired by the third graders. That really, uh, set things up. Hello, I'm Jerry Tenney. I've been a citizen of Isle of Wight County for forty-five years. Thirty-seven of those years, I've worked for Isle of Wight County Schools as a teacher, a coach, a club sponsor, and a substitute bus driver. My children and grandchildren have all been in Isle of Wight County Schools or, uh, they're still currently attending. I'm grateful to the county schools and applaud the accomplishments of the county schools. So many good people working for and with, uh, our s- future citizens as they learn and grow. First, I want to thank the school board, including my former World History student, Mr. Wooster, for its service. By being elected, you've taken a nonpartisan obligation upon yourself. Hopefully you and future boards will be promoting and providing an excellent education. During a school board meeting in January, I watched you being told by a citizen that your prime consideration should be the interest of your voters in conducting school business. I disagree. Each of you holds a nonpartisan seat. Once you were sworn in, your primary obligation became to the entire county. We don't need the distractions that currently exist concerning policy changes. Whether it is learning culinary arts, studying Algebra II, or alternative education, what we do need is the best education we can give our students. The county schools have always had issues to deal with, and they will continue after you have served. However, the structure for dealing with issues already exists. The pressure that is generating proposed policy changes won't be the last pressure the school board will face. If the pressure is successful, it will just be the beginning. There will be unintended consequences for our schools that will be harmful and costly. Because of being recently elected, the majority of the school board has little experience. Take time to understand what exists, use it, and move on from there. Give yourself the time and perspective that is necessary. The two existing policy points covering the teaching of controversial topics are sufficient. They're all that is needed. The first two points. The revisions following the first two points would create an unstable policy game of Jenga for the benefit of those that want to recreate the schools in their own image. Good teachers will literally leave the county. New teachers will think less about coming here. Families with children are going to have to give consideration to not living here. This is unnecessary and counterproductive. We will literally be stepping from Isle of Wight to Isle of Was. The job that you have now is to maintain and improve the schools for a focus of excellence. Do your job. You have the tools. Use them. For the sake of our future, we need Isle of Wight County Schools focused on and committed to excellence. Thank you for your service.
Greg Brown?
Good evening. Thank you all for your time. Uh, I'm Greg Brown. Um, I currently have two children in the county school system at Hardy Elementary. They love it there. Everybody that we've met in the school system. that we've met in the school system just wants the best for our kids. The proposed policy on controversial issues that we're talking about, it's written to look like it's impartial and unbiased. We just want to present the different sides of an issue without providing an opinion. However, there's any number of issues where there is a definite right and wrong side to that issue. It's Black History Month right now. I would not expect our schools to teach that the George Wallises and Holt Connors of the world had equally valid points to Dr. King and John Lewis. That would be wrong. We would be doing a disservice to our students, and that would be dishonest if we were to do something like that. Nobody in the school system is blaming the kids today or trying to make them feel bad about things that happened in the past. There are any number of things in the past that people are uncomfortable about, and that's as it should be because there's lots in the past that was not good. But ignoring uncomfortable facts does not make them go away. Our children will be running the show one day. Like you said at the beginning, Mr. Chairman, we're preparing our students for college, career, and life. So we need to do everything we can to help prepare our children for the best lives they can live. Scaring our educators into blending down the topics and not providing our children the information they need out of some fear of being labeled an indoctrinator is not doing a service to our children. Lastly, from the data provided in the school board agendas from the last couple of months, we've been losing more employees than we've been hiring for at least the last five months. I don't think that the attacks upon our educators from the community are helping in that regard. And if there's one thing we need to work on, it's finding a way to attract, recruit, and retain the best people we can for our school system because that would be the best for our kids. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Herb DeGraff?
Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Kramer, Herb DeGraff, Hardy, Mill Swamp Road, now in the Carisville District. I think the work that's been done between the school board and the staff on IIA is to be commended. Keep up the good work and always work to improve. What I'm really here to talk about, though, is what occurred late last year relative to policy FFA. In December, my board member sent questions to Dr. Kramer and Mr. Pack, and it asked questions relative to the authenticity of what was on the board agenda late last winter, or early last winter. And needless to say, the violation of Virginia Code 18.2-168, if any person forges a public record or certificate, return or assestation knowing same to be forged, he'll be guilty of a Class IV felony. Here's some of the questions that were asked of Dr. Kramer and the staff. Is it your position that the version of policy FFA loaded on Board Doc for second read was the current version of this policy? Why did that question have to be asked? Of course, it should have been. Who uploaded the March 12, 2015 document to the division website, and whose direction was this document uploaded? And did anyone realize the wrong version of policy FFA was being uploaded? Who knew that the 11 June 2015 date was added to the March 12, 2015 document prior to it being uploaded? Who, if anyone, ordered or authorized the changes in the document prior to being uploaded? Questions that shouldn't have to been asked because it's everybody's responsibility to uphold the letter of the law and the policies as set forth and voted upon by this body. Which board members were aware of the issues concerning policy FFA, the naming of school facilities? And why wasn't the entire school board made aware of the potential conflict between the intent of policy FFA and the desires of most folks? Let me remind you, as I said before, it's a Class IV felony according to the Virginia Code 18.2-168. The former chair of Perle Grapevine, or Scuttlebutt, as those of us who've been in the military know, told Dr. Kramer in so many words, "Just ignore this issue," and it would go away. Really? I don't think so. And then we're using questions from Mr. Pack. According to the official minutes of the June 11, 2015 school board meeting, the version of policy FFA used to change the name of the CTE building was not the current version. Does the version of policy FFA that was revised on June 11, 2015 supersede the policy that was redated and used to rename the facility? I am asking this board to take corrective action and vote to have an investigation instituted by the Virginia Attorney General, the state police, or a state agency with the authority to refer to a court trial because, in my opinion, as a citizen, a Class IV felony has occurred. And Mr. Miaris is already after the former parole board chair for falsifying documentation. Hey, what happened in Isle of Wight County relative to FFA is no different. Thank you very much.
Heidi Swartz?
I'm just going to make a previous comment in regards to a previous comment that parents also are afraid to speak up because of our possible retardation to our kids. That's just a remark from a couple of weeks ago. Oddly enough, I'm going to also speak on policy FFA. I just want to give the public a little more history on renaming of the CTE building. All that I'm going to speak on was found on FOIA, which I'll submit for record minutes to be uploaded tonight. This past May, prior to the June 9 meeting, when then-Chair Tynes initially brought to the public's attention the renaming, what we didn't know was central office had been having discussions with RRMM, an architect in Virginia Beach, to design the sign for the CTE building. So before citizen input was to take place, taxpayers' money was already being spent on the project. There was even a resolution designed by Pack to be read at an earlier May school board meeting. And what's even more interesting in later emails in November of 2022, there's a mention that the attorney would have needed the FFA policy to design that resolution for the May 12 school board meeting. Yet we were told it was June when a policy was suddenly found in time for the June 9 meeting. Now, there's additional communication that would add to the who, the what, and the when, and the where, but I was told we're not privileged to those due to attorney-client privilege. What would be in those, and this leaves even more unanswered questions. Who initiated the renaming? When? Someone in central office or someone on the board? Were steps started to design the sign by a board member without other board members' decisions, or was it strictly central office? Was it Thornton and Pack CC'd in correspondence so it would conveniently be attorney-client privilege? Was the May board meeting resolution called off because the sign wasn't ready or because Pack asked questions regarding citizen input? And that's where the fraudulent policy comes into place. So the naming could still happen for a living individual. Unfortunately, there's still a lot of unanswered questions hidden under attorney-client privilege. And as you can see, this leads to all kinds of theories. What I do know, I know the decision to name the building after Dr. Thornton was decided long before the switcheroo of the fraudulent FFA policy on June 9. I know a resolution was designed by Pack for a May meeting well before the June 9 meeting, and a policy should or was provided to him. And I know a design for the sign with an architect was well on its way before the June meeting, when citizens were told we would have input until June 30 by Chair Tynes. I do know it wasn't going to matter what anyone's input was. The trajectory to have Dr. Thornton's name on the CTE building was going to happen regardless, fraudulently even. The only reason we have up for second read tonight is because we had a change on the board, and the fraudulent version was flushed out. I asked that the board make a motion to immediately rescind the previous vote on renaming the CTE building under the fraudulent policy. In fairness, if the decision were to have considered renaming the CTE building, and it happened to have the opportunity to do so for a living person, it should have been named the Roberts-Thorton CTE Building. Let's not forget that Casey Roberts leadership had facilitated the broken-in of a $3 million donation from Smithfield Foods that directly supported the creation of the CTE program. Also, I'm directly requesting that I receive an email that's missing from my FOIA between Ruett and Briggs on June 9. Ruett, the clerk on June 9, 2022, and June of 2015, was the owner of that policy of FFA. In the email, she states, "I have entered the policy and information into the spreadsheet, not Briggs, as Briggs stated in her confession statement in December." Ruett was the owner of the policy, not Briggs. Ruett entered it in the benefit of Thornton. But there's a missing page in my email, my FOIA, in between those two. Thank you.
Matthew Ployd?
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Matt Ployd. I'm a history teacher and a government teacher at Smithfield High School, and I'm also the president of the Isle of Wight Educators Association. The last school board meeting saw teachers, students, parents, and citizens point out the shortcoming of the amendment for IIA due to threats to educational integrity of the curriculum, college board issues, the probable loss of AP and dual enrollment programs, as well as a very whitewashed version of history and English being what the authors of this amendment seemed to desire from our schools. Since that time, Mr. Marsh has introduced the same principles under the guise of IMB. Teachers wanted to be a part of this conversation. We proposed and requested that the board establish an ad hoc committee made up of stakeholders, parents, teachers, and administrators, to help navigate our way through this to find a common ground that all parties can live with. The board apparently wasn't interested in any educator input as the committee never materialized. Meanwhile, we are here, right back where we started. Most of the concerns of the teachers were ignored. The dictionary defines insanity as repeating the same act repetitively expecting a different outcome, and that is what this IMB amendment means to us. Now, instead of repeating myself ad nauseam, allow me to instead ask a series of questions. If the answer to any of these questions is "I don't know," then may I respectfully suggest that we need to pump the brakes on this amendment before irreparable damage is done to the quality of education that our children receive and to the careers of the highly motivated, specialized, and trained educators who work with our students every day. This amendment appears to have no infrastructure or protocol related to it, and the verbiage, as well as all provided definitions, yes, we read them, is vague and subjective. For example, who decides what is divisive? Who decides or determines what's indoctrination? Is teaching the positive and negative history of both parties in a government class indoctrination? Is challenging students to see both sides of an issue indoctrination? Who determines what constitutes a violation of this policy? Department heads? Highly controversial political agendas? Or since most of these items directly align with the talking points, the candidates whom they finance, do we just let middle resolution pack determine the outcome, especially considering the amount of money that they sank into specific campaigns in the last election cycle? Are we really putting politics and cronyism ahead of giving our students the best, most well-rounded education that we can provide? In the proposed amendment, it states neither the school board or any employee of the school division shall endorse any political party or candidate while performing the prescribed duties or responsibilities for Isle of Wight County Schools. Congratulations. If you pass this, this board has three members who have already violated it by claiming last month to represent only certain constituents and representing conservative values. These statements were made repeatedly. So respectfully, what is the consequence of this to be? Before touting the size of your election wins in the last election, let's be honest and put it into context. Voter turnout was very low. And the point I'm making with that is, now that you've been elected to this post, you no longer represent your specific voters. You represent all of Isle of Wight County, and it's time we start acting like it. On a personal note, not as a teacher employee but as a husband, it is never okay for any member of this board to reach out to the wife of the teacher at 1:00 a.m., especially the night before he's going to speak, and especially after he's been very public about his criticisms about some of the policies coming down from this board. Maybe it was a hack, maybe it wasn't. I have a hard time believing that someone who is not on your friends list, social media list, or has ever even met you just randomly is the one person that gets harassed by this hack. Hacks don't work that way normally. It's certainly the most inefficient hack I've ever seen. My wife is not to be contacted by any member of this board, period. If harassment continues, I will not hesitate to take the story to any media outlet that I have at my disposal. It's time to put the politics and vitriolics behind and start moving forward with the business of educating our children. Thank you.
Arianne Williams?
Good evening. I wanted to talk about the teaching about controversial issues underneath, I guess my topic is constitutional negligence. So we could be standing up here and all talking about how the school board honored the teachers by gifting them with pizza today, since today was National Pizza Day, or a creation of a teacher store where teachers can get supplies, or the development of community closets within a school to help students in need, or let's not forget about the topic of security. But here we are talking about constitutional negligence. So this policy, or these policies, are just simply political jokes and a diversion for bridging the gap between community and school. And I can tell that there is no connection between the mission and the vision for Isle of Wight County Schools, and seems to be a lot of loose gaps in between. When there is a need for a policy, there is a reason. Have you conveyed the reason with the community? As a licensed curriculum development writer helps me to understand the why before creating anything. Now, the why includes a culmination of community leaders, teachers, all different types of people, not just one. So the verb usage in some of these policies, to me, they seem to have a double, double meaning. Let's annotate and critique number three, for example. The word persuading as it relates to the teachers. Are you not persuading others how to think when you develop policies that only support one political view, or read as a commandment? You are not God, so why are you using the word "shall" in vain? So are teachers the ones that are endorsing political parties, or are you the one that's endorsing political parties with pictures and one-sided arguments on social media? So you don't want situations to be viewed through the eyes of race when it was clearly stated during the last school board meeting that Dr. Coleman was an African-American or Dr. Getz was a white woman, and it may appear that you think that I'm a black woman standing up here, but I'm not. Soy Latina, espana negra, afro medica, nay blanca. So I'm pleasantly confused with number eight when using the word "superior." So what students are you referring to? Be specific. Number nine is a pure sprawl or joke. You do know that teachers are not teaching systemic racism in classroom. However, it does exist makes number nine a lie. I have a black son. So can you be more specific when you say political activist organizations and social justice movements? There was a sense of ambiguity. You do know that social movements include but are not limited to civil rights movement, conservation movement, human rights movement, LGBTQ, Mothers Against Drunk Driving Tea Party, women's suffrage, and I forgot to mention World Cleanup Day. Do you want to get rid of that? So if I were to show you this and ask you what this is, you might just say that this appears to be a worn-out hair tie. So I went to do my daughter's hair this morning. I found this in place with a rubber band that I placed on her hair yesterday. I asked her why, and she said, "Mommy, my hairband popped, and my teacher took this off of her wrist, and she put it on my hair to make a button." See, we're more than just teachers in the classroom. We keep things in place, yet you're trying to replace them with duds. James Baldwin once stated that "It is certain in any case that ignorance allied with power is the most ferocious enemy justice can have." So I guess you can't lead by example when you fail to give a diverse perspective of some.
Matt Burgess?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Matt Burgess, and I've had the honor and privilege to serve Isle of Wight County as a teacher for the past 19 years. I'm here tonight to speak on the proposed policy for teaching about controversial issues. For nearly two decades, I have taught history and government at Winter High School, and for most of my career, I have felt myself to be a valued and respected member of the community. They say it takes a village to raise a child, and I've been a proud member of this village, having taught thousands of students. I hope to teach many more. Lately, though, I have not felt so valued and respected. The proposed policies on teaching controversial topics would name teachers as the enemy, the boogeyman, villain. The proposed policy declares that my colleagues and I are not to be trusted. There is no need for this pointed mistrust. I am not a Marxist. I am not a fascist. I am not a groomer. I don't teach critical race theory. No teacher I know of in this county fits any of these descriptions or is attempting to indoctrinate the children. So let's be clear about the proposed policy and its previous iteration that was attempted last month. You are chasing a solution to a problem that does not exist. You are like Don Quixote tilting at windmills. You are working hard to appease an angry and vocal portion of the community, one that is here at every school board meeting demanding change, one that I suspect has watched too much cable news and is beating the drum to fight nonexistent problems. If passed, this policy will be the first of many that they demand. Next, they'll demand an enforcement addendum, and you'll find yourself hiring inquisitors to comb through teachers' lesson plans to seek out any new heresy. You'll find yourself creating a new wave committee of public You'll find yourself creating a new wave committee of public safety to find the traitors among your teachers. Like a rock thrown in a pond, the rippling effect of this policy will undoubtedly affect the students in a negative manner. Teachers will be nervous to teach any issue that might be considered controversial and will find ways to avoid the topics. I see it already happening among my colleagues, with teachers second-guessing what would be normal lessons and student-driven class discussions, and you haven't even voted on the proposal. In addition to my role as a teacher, I'm an admin at Windsor High School, and I help with a number of things at the school, including school-wide attendance tracking. Instead of focusing on problems that don't exist, I wish you would turn your attention to an actual crisis that is happening under your watch. Are you even aware that Windsor High School is in danger of losing accreditation due to student attendance? Not S.O.L. pass rates, not graduation rates, student attendance. We're only halfway through the year, and forty-two students have already been identified as chronically absent, and that number will grow every week. That's already eight percent of the school. The state expects schools to have less than ten percent of the student population as chronically absent. Good luck explaining to the citizens in your next election if WHS loses accreditation. At least you'll be able to tell them you vanquished the CRT boogeyman. I suspect that you will pass either this policy or another variation of it at some point, but I hope it's worth the cost. You will have defeated your imaginary foe, you will have appeased the loud voices in the community, but in doing so, you will have alienated your teachers, named us an enemy of the students and the parents, and ignored real problems that are growing every day. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, board and members of the audience. It's always a pleasure to speak with you. Hope you all well this evening. It's good to see you. I come here tonight with a heavy heart. I come here tonight as a parent of four children. I come here tonight as a teacher at Windsor High School this morning when we got word of violence at one of our schools, right around the corner from us, where a twelve-year-old is stabbed in the neck with a pencil. And so I redirected my speech for tonight. I like to mix it up. I can get all vitriolic and excited, and we can have civic discussion. It's how our country was made. It's important. But that saddened me, and it hurt my heart, because I thought about my children, and I thought about your children. I thought about folks in this room. They were all friends here. They were all people. We're someone's children. We're someone's parents. So it really shook me up, and I redirected my speech. I told myself to calm down and really focus on what was important, which is the health and safety of our children in Isle of Wight County schools. And this is where I really would like to direct my statements at the group of citizens who seek to threaten teachers, who seek to threaten in back-channel Facebook groups, which some of you are aware of, our qualifications and what we do. I am not one to be threatened easily, and I'm not one to be scared, and I don't run from said threats. It is not cool that people from this group show up at people's houses and take pictures and, in some cases, track us. It is my humble opinion that I would ask these said people, some of them are your friends, maybe you could relay the message for me and for us. It is time to take our discourse back to a civil level, which is a foundation of American government and American history, which many people pride themselves on knowing a lot about our history. It doesn't seem like they paid attention that day in class. So, uh, Mr. Marsh, thank you for your new revision. I am here to speak against this revision, and I'm here to speak to you as a parent. I have heard through certain channels that you are fearful of future generations of Isle of Wight County students being called oppressors. This will not be the case. There is no student, there is no teacher
One minute.
...that I have ever known that would call a student an oppressor. Also, as my friend Matt Burgess mentioned earlier, education is not indoctrination. We do not indoctrinate. We educate. I don't seek to indoctrinate anyone. I don't rise up in a pool pit in my classroom, but I do present facts. Also, I need each of you to hear me. You need to trust us. We are trained professionals. I've done and taught the same class for twenty-one years in this county, and I'm incredibly proficient. We go through rigorous training, three years we're on summit of evaluations, and then we go through recertification pro- programs. I don't teach the mechanic at DeWitt's how to change my transmission, and I don't tell my former friends in Southampton County how to plow their fields.
Time.
Thank you very much.
I knew I should have worn the heels. I knew it. All good. Good evening. My name is Jessica Brannon. I am a Spanish and ESL teacher at Windsor High School and 2019, 2020 Isle of Wight Teacher of the Year. This will be my fifth year at Windsor and my tenth year in education. I am very passionate about my job, especially helping my students. First and foremost, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for those who responded to my email after the previous January school board meeting. Tonight, I would like to address the policy IMB, Teaching About Controversial Issues. The proposed policy appears as retribution for teachers who spoke out against policy IIA. Instead of banning controversial issues, which I applaud the change, this new policy places teachers under the magnifying glass in order to accomplish a political agenda. I have always tried my best to be politically neutral in my classroom while providing a safe and welcoming environment for all my students, but it's become increasingly difficult to do so in the last few years. I work in a time when current events often invade the classroom. I have had to navigate how to support my students and teach my content while maneuvering the incidents of the real world. Whether it is teaching the day after the January sixth insurrection, after a local incident with a police officer makes national news, or after a depressingly numerous amount of school shootings, my instruction is frequently affected by controversial events that impact how my students feel and learn. As a high school teacher, even if I try to ignore these situations, even if I do not plan instruction around them, my students will bring them into the discussion. I implore you to consider the impact this policy will have on your teachers and subsequently your students. This policy creates an environment of fear rather than protection. How will the policy be enforced? What will the consequences be for teachers who are considered in violation? Who determines if they violated the policy? Can any one moment in a lesson be singled out for inspection? In response to my email, Mr. Marsh told me, I am comfortable in assuming that you and I sit on opposite sides of the political spectrum based on your signature block alone, end quote. If a school board member makes an assumption about my political views simply from a signature block, what assumptions can be made from a worksheet taken out of context or a conversation a student initiates in the classroom? As I stated in that email, I encourage the school board to take stock of the actual need for policy change by polling all stakeholders, staff, students, teachers, parents, et cetera, in IWCS, as there are a number of individuals that we're not able to and are not able to vote for school board members that are affected by these changes. In education, we use data to drive our instruction. Choosing to campaign, choosing to campaign on a political narrative is not reason enough for a policy change. The board should provide a data-driven reason from our schools that justifies such action. In the meantime, if you would like
One minute.
...to keep controversial topics out of the classroom, let us use our professional training to develop our instruction, and school board members use evidence to drive your policymaking, not political talking points.
Well, I, I will first say good evening, gentlemen of the board, Ms. Tynes and Dr. Kramer. My name is Laura Fletcher, and I'm from District Three, and I am white. I'm a mother of white children, just wanted to say that. By many, I'm probably considered undereducated. I do understand representative government, however, and you all do represent those that elected you to office, and you are to work for the good of the county, and I know that you understand that, and I thank you. I'm here to share my concerns about the spending spree Isle of Wight County schools has embarked upon. Things I've heard brought before the board recently, a new Hardy school completion, new admin building, the old Hardy, new school buses, new bus garage, new athletic fields with synthetic turf, new band and chorus rooms, new school. On the agenda for this evening, new interactive whiteboards. Additionally, I recent heard, recently heard Ms. Tynes bring up the topic of universal pre-K, which she continually referred to as childcare. Another doozy of a comment was her statement that universal pre-K would be paid for with free money. Do you know how offensive that statement is to a taxpaying citizen? I have seen zero restraint from Isle of Wight County schools regarding the items they want to fund with my free money, not even a blush when they up the ante at every school board meeting. I will ask this board again to not allow one more project to be considered without a full accounting of how the ESAR and COVID funds were spent and what's left. I see where almost eighty thousand dollars of remaining ESAR funds are being proposed to pay for the new interactive whiteboards, which one thing I think I saw was four hundred thousand dollars, maybe. I did some quick research. These boards have only a three-year warranty, and they are not Ethernet-ready, making them unreliable, particularly in more rural areas with unstable Wi-Fi. I want everybody to understand that. Enough. We are hemorrhaging dollars. We don't have to pay for things we don't need. We're heading into grave financial times. As a nation, we are thirty-one trillion dollars in debt. Over the next few years, we'll pay eight trillion in interest alone. We're living in a dream world. I urge you to rein in your spending. Focus only on what's a necessity. Set aside rainy day funds, and if we care about the future of our children, we'll make the tough decisions now. Mr. Colick, Mr. Marsh, Mr. Wooster, do not forget the people who rewarded you with their vote. We must have answers to how and where the ESAR funds have been spent. I'm not sure of the protocol, but I'm asking tonight for a special called meeting to be arranged for a date in the near future where this information will be provided to the citizens of Isle of Wight County. I'd like handouts and PowerPoints as well. We can't continue to rubber stamp pet projects and luxuries. And since I've gone there, actually, I meant to say, we're making our children debt slaves, since I've gone there, I want an accounting of every dime spent on equity programs in this county. WHRO's presentation a few weeks ago proved how entrenched DEI and CRT is throughout our curriculum and teacher training programs. Racist propaganda and its tenants must be rooted out and defunded. I will conclude with a commendation. Mr. Marsh, Mr. Wooster, thank you for the courage you've shown in presenting policies IIA and IMB, all with the singular goal of protecting our children from the mire of worldly perversions, barreling down on them long before their hearts and minds are ready to carry these burdens. Thank you for supporting parents' rights.
Maureen Province.
Uh, my name is Maureen Province, and I'm a parent of two Smithfield High School graduates and one current freshman. I spoke at last month's board meeting regarding the problematic nature of policy IIA, and I'd like to thank the board for hearing the multitude of concerns expressed that evening and for subsequently amending the language of policy IIA to reflect that the use of instructional materials must take into account the educational needs of students of all grade levels. On the subject of sexually explicit instructional materials, I believe the board has reached a reasonable compromise, and I applaud you for your willingness to listen to constructive criticism and adapt accordingly. However, in regard to the IMB draft that is being presented during this evening's meeting, my first impression is that it seeks a solution in search of a problem. I'm not aware of any instances of teachers trying to coerce or indoctrinate students to adopt beliefs that promote racism, sexism, oppression, victimization, or any of the rest of the laundry list of ideological concepts detailed in items four through nine of this draft. Although the wording of the draft now addresses controversial issues, the spirit remains the same, namely the banning of any, quote, inherently divisive materials, since items four through nine are basically a rehashing of that definition of divisive content as established by Governor Yonkin's executive order. If I were a teacher presented with this policy, I would be deeply offended by this extensive catalog of what not to do when presenting content. We're reaching a dire stage, both locally and on a national level, of a teacher shortage that's undoubtedly negatively impacting our children's education. Combine that with the post-pandemic learning loss that's been documented across the board, and I think it's imperative that all parties, parents, teachers, administration, and the school board strive to focus on fully supporting our students and teachers rather than burdening them with a restrictive policy that's both redundant and, quite frankly, insulting. In closing, I'd like to urge the board to use this moment as an opportunity to lead by example. Item number four of draft IMB states that teachers, quote, "shall not endorse any political party, political party platform, political candidate, political ideology, political activist reorganization, or social justice movement or narrative." The demonizing of, quote, inherently divisive content is without a doubt a shining example of a political narrative. In the interest of holding yourselves to the same standards you propose to require of our teaching staff, I respectfully ask that draft IMB be discarded altogether, or at the very least edited in such a manner that it gives our teachers the benefit of the doubt that they understand what is and is not acceptable to endorse or promote in our schools. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
That's it. Chair call.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for speaking. Next, we'll have board member committee reports and other information. Are there any members of the board that would like to make comments? Ms. Tynes?
Thank you. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to, um, share a couple of classes at Carrollton Elementary with one of my colleagues, Mr. Cunningham. We had an enjoyable morning at Carrollton Elementary with two classes. They were third-grade classes. They were Miss, Mrs. Barlow and Mr. S., Mr. Sus- anybody here that-
Mr. Robb.
Su- sir, that's it. He told us to call him Mr. S.
Mr. S.
Yes. And I would like to thank the parents of the students that are in those two classes because those young children, they were aware of a lot of things that's going on in the world, and I'm positive they did not get it all from school with some of the questions that they had from us, because listening to a lot of the speakers tonight, I'm sure some of the teachers are not going down that avenue right now with some of the students. So I'm thinking they are learning some of these activities from home. And, uh, again, thank you to the parents, and I always thank our staff because those two teachers, it's amazing what the students were, the questions and the level of, of the questions- teachers, it's amazing what the students were, the questions and the level of the questions that they had for us. We asked the question about, you know, most of the time, what would you like to be when you finish high school and all? These young people were coming with things like archaeologists, of course, engineers, veterinarians, those type of things. I think we only had about two teachers, maybe three the most, okay? And I was so proud of them, but we had a nice day at Carrollton Elementary yesterday morning. I also would like to thank Mr. Plod, Mr. Matt Plod, and the Smithfield High School debate team for inviting me out to be one of their student congress debater for one of their student, judge for one of their student congress debates, which will take place on Saturday. I think it starts around 8:30 and it should end around 5:30 Saturday evening, so if you are out and about, stop by and see what those young people are doing. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Tines. Mr. Marsh?
Okay. I attended two meetings on the first of February. One was the Governor's School for the Arts, and the same day, CSEP, I'm on the Joint Board. They had a meeting on that day. I believe these, both of those organizations are going to have meetings every quarter or something like that, but I'll be the point of contact to go to each one of the meetings. Mr. Marsh is the secondary to go to those, so if I can't make one, I'll let you know well in advance, so you can attend, but I have the dates and everything. One thing about the Governor's School, we have students out there that are doing great things. Everybody here should Google the Governor's School for the Arts is in Norfolk and go see some of the plays they have out there. It is fantastic. During the meeting, they had two students come in, I believe both of them were seniors. One played the cello and one sang, and it sounded like they were in Broadway shows or something. It's wonderful, and I wish I'd known about that before. That's all I have. This is the chair.
Thanks, Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Chair, I'll piggyback on you there, Mr. Cunningham. With regards to plays, on January the 14th, I went out to Windsor High School and I watched the students put on Adam's Family Musical. And just a big shout out to all those students and the people that put it on. It was really neat, and my two little kids had a hoot watching it. It was good stuff. It really was. I was impressed with what they did. And it was, for the record, Mr. Kramer, it was standing room only in there. It really was. And then on January 27th, I had the pleasure of sitting down with Mr. Colick and County Supervisor Gryse and Mr. Keaton and Mrs. Humphries and Dr. Coleman. And for me, it was a training session because I got to get the backstory of the funding of the new Hardy, how it came to be, where it was, and where we are now. It was an eye-opening experience. The finances with the schools, it's a lot to wrap your head around. The big takeaway for that, moving forward, when we start talking about money, is that in 2020, from now, we are $14 million about over the original estimated cost. So there's a lot that goes into that, but for me, that was a big eye-opener. So we're way over budget on the new Hardy. And that's all I got. I yield.
Mr. Wooster?
Okay, I've got a couple of things. Last week, I attended the Virginia School Board Association's Capitol Conference in Richmond, and some topics included the upcoming legislative budget, along with some education highlights that include reading and math specialists, a mental health pilot program, and lab schools. We also received a legislative report that included several bills to uphold the fundamental rights of parents to make the educational decisions for their children, as well as some bills regarding school construction and modernization. The legislature has finished their crossover from the House of Delegates to the Senate and vice versa, though the opposite houses are working on those bills now. And I also attended two games of the Three Rivers Basketball League. This is an eight-school league of special-needs students. Both Smithfield High and Windsor High are participants. Last week, Dr. Kramer and I attended the game between Smithfield High and Plan B Academy out of Chesapeake. And this morning, I attended Windsor High against Plan B and was fortunate enough to sit with my son, who is a student at Plan B Academy. And if anybody has the opportunity to go see these games, please do. It would be well worth your while. You will enjoy every minute of it. Thank you.
Chair call. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Tines.
I wanted to let them know also, I did attend the conference in Richmond, but I did it virtually. And that's it for right now.
Thank you.
Did you want to go ahead and get the report from Samantha?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
I apologize for that.
So, Smithfield's doing pretty well. We have our JRTC blood drive coming up in two weeks. First 100 donors get Q-Daddy's coupons, so if that's an incentive for anyone, come on out. Then our Operation Smile Club, which it funds cleft lip surgery for kids, and we're having the fundraiser with the world's finest chocolates, and we'll be selling t-shirts at any games. So like soccer games coming up, we'll be there selling t-shirts, so we're really excited for that.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the monthly financial reports with Dr. Coleman, Mr. Christensen, Ms. Pfeffer.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Kramer, you have the financial reports in front of you, as well as the check register, check register summary, large ticket item summary, and the facility usage reports. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Mr. Marsh?
Gentlemen, I have a few questions in no particular order, and a lot of this is for my own edification and for anyone listening. On the check register, we've got a Treasury, $5,775 to the Treasury of Virginia for textbooks. Is that because we buy textbooks from VDOE or why is it to the Treasury?
That particular purchase is for Virtual Virginia.
Virtual Virginia?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next question, completely unrelated. There, we have, I noticed that we have the monthly warehouse lease for Hope Presbyterian Church, and I also know that our lease is coming up to expire.
Yes, sir.
If for some reason our new warehouse, the old Hardy gym, isn't ready by the time the lease expires, is there a plan in place to mitigate that? Does that make sense? I don't know if I'm asking it the right way.
Yes, it does. Go ahead, Dr. Coleman.
Yes, sir. One plan that's in place is asking for an extension onto the warehouse for a couple of months, just in case, but we are planning for issues that may occur so that we're ready for all sorts of, I guess, except pop-ups at that time. So we do have a plan in place to ask for an extension. If the extension is not given, then there is other plans in place also where we could store the items that we do have and items not moving to the warehouse moving forward until we can get in to the area.
Thank you, sir. And one last question, again, this is unrelated and really from my own understanding. In the check register, there are approximately $2,400 in total charges to our Bank of America charge cards. The item description is food and the location is number 910, that's Central Office Admin. And so my question is, what did we spend $2,400 for on food? And what's the criteria for buying food for staff or whoever? And I'm going to presume some of that was for the monthly meetings, so I'm just trying to get a handle on that.
Yes, sir. To get you the specific dollar amounts associated with each event, I would want to do a little bit more research on that, but I do know that part of that was due to, there were some meetings that happened during the month that involved students and families, community, there were different committees that came to Central Office, and there was refreshments provided there. We also had a holiday gathering at Central Office, which some were purchased there as well.
And Ms. Getz, could you?
Ms. Marsh, I can actually answer some of that for you. We also did a candy cane delivery for all students, where we, Central Office goes out and deliver candy canes to all of our elementary students, so that was included on there. You did mention the Christmas party for Central Office, school board meetings. We also did a luncheon for the principals as, this was December, so there were a lot of holiday things going on, so it was sort of an unusual month. But we did do a holiday luncheon for our principals. And then we also had a student advisory committee meeting where our students came and met with Dr. Kramer, and we provided them with lunch.
Vice Chair, if we may, if you would like, we can provide you with an itemized account. I think Mrs. Getz, Dr. Coleman, and Mr. Christensen have given you an account, but if you need something more extensive, we can certainly provide that.
No, sir, that's sufficient. I mean, I tend to dig into the registry, and so $2,400 bucks caught my attention for a month, but that makes sense, and I yield my time.
Are there any more questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next topic will be support services update.
Mr. Chairman, are we referring to 15.1 Division Fire System?
Yes, sir.
Contract?
Yes.
All right. What you have in front of you is the Division Fire System contract. This is going to be informational, and I want to actually go through this contract with you. Do they have it? They don't have it? All right. What we're going to speak on tonight is the, and I'll make sure that you get a copy. I thought we had it attached, but the Division Fire System contract. Every year, we have to take a look at the fire system contracts. One company that we've been working with was Johnson Controls. Johnson Controls does have a cooperative contract, and I just want to touch bases with it. I know that some of you have experience in it. Fire alarm expert service, sprinkler service, the backflow systems, the dry sprinkler systems, the wet sprinkler systems, the, all of the fire extinguishers that we have in the division, emergency lighting systems, and the hood system. And one thing that we really want to do when you come to a fire system is to make sure that we get it right. We have no leeway into messing up in this particular area. So using an expert as Johnson Controls that has been doing the work in the division for at least the last 10 years, no matter what contractor we use, at one time, we used the outside agency, GCA, we did it in-house, now we use SSC. We always use Johnson Controls for those fire systems. Johnson Controls come with a cooperative contract, so this is just informational, letting you know I would like to move forward with Johnson Controls. Of course, as soon as the contract is signed, I will bring it back for you. So this is just informational for you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, informational.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. We can go right into the next item.
All right. Next will be buses for auction. We have two buses for auction at this time. We have a GMC Minota Type A and has 278,000 miles and needs a new engine. The cost of replacement of the new engine is $3,099, and that's without labor. So we put labor in there. We have found that this item will be cheaper to auction it off and get a new one, once it's time to get a new one on the replacement schedule. Next is the bus 27, a 2,000 International Type C. It's 23 years old and it's very high mileage. So those are the two buses that the Fleet Services Department wants to auction off at this time, so I'm just bringing it before you.
And that's an action item?
And that is an action item, to allow us to auction those two items.
Okay, so we can go ahead and, yes, Ms. Tines?
I would like to make a motion to approve bus 304 and bus 27 for auction due to age, high mileage, and repairs needed, and request that the Board of Supervisors to appropriate any revenue from the auction back to the transportation budget line.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Clerk shall take the vote. And that passes five for zero. Next topic, new Hardy update.
Yes, sir. And before we touch on new Hardy update video, I just wanted to make sure I brought some clarification and just piggyback off of something that Mr. Marsh mentioned earlier concerning the meeting, and just wanted to make sure we add clarification to what you said. Mr. Marsh was right on, right on point with exactly how in-depth the meeting went with the, I guess you could say, the preview on what occurred, what happened at the meeting, what led us there. But I want to make sure that we're, when we're looking at a $12 million overage, that $12 million overage was during the planning phases. I just wanted to make sure we're clear. It's not a $12 million overage now. Now everything is running exactly the way it's supposed to run, but during the planning phases, yes, it was a $12 million overage, but not now. Now we're absolutely zero. Right on point.
Yes, Mr. Marsh?
Dr. Coleman, just to clear the air, that wasn't a direct shot at you or anyone else. My point in saying that out loud was so that everyone listening knows that everything is more expensive today.
Yes, sir.
So as we move forward in financial discussions, it's a big part of the equation is how much stuff costs today.
Absolutely. I yield.
Yes, Ms. Tines.
Yes, I would like to say something on that part because I was board chair as well as Mrs. Carr during the time that was, I wasn't chair, I was vice chair, Mrs. Carr was the chair. That $12 million, just like happened when COVID came about, the board, the school board did their part as far as the planning for the new Hardy Elementary. We had actions. We sent it to the Board of Supervisors as we were supposed to, but the thing that we call COVID-19 came about before the Board of Supervisors had an opportunity to act on anything. I'm saying this because I think the public need to know the process and actually what happened. We were not negligent with their monies. No one was negligent with their monies. So things shut down. When the project came back before both boards, of course, you know, like everything else, the price of materials had gone up, so it costs more money. So this is where that $12, $15 million is coming from. And I say $12, $15, because sometime you hear 15, sometime you hear 12, so something in between. And that's, I want to explain that. No one has done anything with the public's money. This is what's happening. It's just like when you go to the store now and try to buy a dozen of eggs. It costs much more now since COVID. So it's going to cost us a little more money to build that school, but I'm proud of what we're doing for those young children in Isle of Wight County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tines.
All right. This is going to be the new Hardy from the inside. This is the first, if we can pause it for one second. Okay, we'll just jump right in. All right. First, this is going to be the hallway. We're passing on our right is the administrative offices, and on the left is the psychology and guidance council offices. One of the main offices, nurses' office and bookkeeper office is once again on the right. Now, on the left turn leads you toward the second grade area, so the view that you're seeing now is down the second grade hall. In the ceiling, you will see the hydronic lines for heating and cooling systems that runs throughout the school and the first floor and the second floor. And moving forward on the left behind the media center, and on the right is the cafeteria, cafeteria and auditorium combined, which we are now entering. This picture's a little dark, but as you can see, this is the cafeteria that you're standing in, and where you see the red tape, it leads to the auditorium side. Once again, there we go. This is the auditorium side. All right. Now we're headed into the main office. And you see the nurses' office is what we just passed, and then, of course, the conference room. Additional offices for APs, storage areas. Additional offices for APs, storage areas. And this last room here is going to be the electrical room. Right now, you're looking directly at the guidance offices. You have two guidance offices in New Hardy. This is the second one right there. And now this hallway here is leading to the second grade. You're going to pass several classrooms on your right. Right now, we still have all of the lights and everything in place, but in the upcoming month, you will have a very clear picture of what it looks like with the ceiling towels And now this is a picture of one more hallway that's going to lead to the group bathrooms. This is the sink area and more bathroom spaces. This is one side of the group bathrooms. Of course, you've seen the hand washing stations on the outside of the bathroom, the hand washing stations on the outside. And we're going to go right into the other side of the restroom. Once again, the hand washing stations and the other. Right now, the stalls are not in, not in place at this time, but you will see that in the upcoming month. And that is going to be it. Once again, that is the inside view. This is the first inside view that you have had for New Hardy. Are there any questions concerning that view there? We decided not to go with the exterior just because it was the same, but.
Yeah, Mr. Marsh.
Hey, doctor. So the last time we spoke, you mentioned that there were some potential delays in backordered parts.
Backordered parts.
And then, if I recall, they'll quote me on this, Old Dominion, possible delay?
It was a, it was a, it was two different delays. It was an architectural delay with Verizon, architectural delay with Dominion, and it was a, I think we got through the processes of the delay with Columbia Gas. All three areas are designing, and I've received the email today concerning Verizon, concerning moving forward. Their design period is over. Now they've just sent a quote on how much it's going to cost, and then we pay them, and then we can move forward. But once all of them get on board, get on lined up, we still have to organize who's what, when, where, why, who comes in, and go from there. But there were delays in all three of those areas.
Were, so we're good.
We are working through the last one at this time. I just received the quote today, and once the architectural phases are done, then they have to let us know when they can come out. So it's not like, okay, they just finished today so they can start tomorrow. They still have to organize themselves, so.
Excellent, sir. Any major headhurters for you? Any big concerns?
Not at this time. Not at this time.
I yield, Mr. Chair.
Does anybody else have any questions for Dr. Coleman? Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
No problem.
Okay, the next item is purchase of instructional technology.
Purchase of 15.4, purchase of instructional technologies, interactive whiteboards. This is the cost of the interactive whiteboard, and then we're going to go into what grants they came out of and exactly where they would be in the division. First off, it's Title I, FY '23, $74,172.92. Title I, FY '22, $225,520.50. ESER, $108,813.65. And Adult Ed, $14,273.60. This is for overall 143 interactive whiteboards. All right, so that is allowing you to know where the money came from. Came from Title I, FY '23, Title I, FY '22, ESER, and Adult Ed. Now, Title I, both funding sources have 96 boards for New Hardy, Carsville, Windsor Elementary School classrooms. ESER, 43 boards were purchased for secondary schools, math and English, Smithville High School, Windsor High School, Georgie Taylor Middle School, and Smithfield Middle School. And Adult Ed came from the Adult Ed grant for mobile interactive whiteboards. So that sums up the 143 total interactive whiteboards and the funding sources that they came from.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Coleman? Ms. Tynes?
At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of interactive whiteboards in the amount of $422,828.95.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Marsh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for the folks listening, what exactly are we spending $422,000 on? I get it, they're interactive smart boards. Give it to me in layman's terms. What is it, and what are we doing with them?
All right. So to go into more detail of how these boards are used on the instructional side, I'm going to lean to Ms. Getz once again, and she can go into more detail of the teachers and the plans for the interactive whiteboards.
Good evening again. These are actually Promethean boards that we're going to be purchasing. We already have some in our classrooms, all third grade classrooms, for example. Training comes with them to use for the teachers, so teachers have already, some of our teachers have already received the training. It is ongoing. They are really enjoying them, and we were in classrooms earlier, and we saw elementary students using them for fractions, where they can go up on the board, use the little fraction icon, they can shade in. So it's interactive. It's just like, you know, what it appears to sound like. It's a great instructional tool. They're all across the country. We are actually a little, I don't want to say behind, but we have had this on our list of items that we wanted to purchase for quite some time, and we've done it slowly as we've had the funds available. Title I has allowed us to have additional funds because through the COVID relief, we actually were afforded more money than we had planned. So when this happened, we thought a great use of this money would be for COVID, for whiteboards, interactive whiteboards, and then also for the Adult Ed as well. So that would be with Mrs. Ford's program.
If I may add, Vice Chair, this is pretty much standard equipment in most of our classrooms this day and age. I think what I'd like to recommend we do, Mrs. Getz, Dr. Coleman, is perhaps to have a demonstration for the public, although our educators, and I would mention to say many of our parents have seen this, but I think for the board's purposes and probably more so for the public, perhaps we can have a demonstration in the coming months.
Sure. Happy.
Yes, Ms. Tynes?
What Mrs. Getz just said, that we are behind, I am going to agree with her because when previous superintendent, we had here Dr. Pereira, when she was here as our leader, we wanted, I toured a school. We were going to Richmond one day to the Capitol, the conference, so we stopped in a school in Hericow where she had previously been principal, and they were utilizing the whiteboard. That was the first time we saw it there, and they were utilizing the whiteboard that day. So if you can recall when Dr. Pereira was here, that was like 2015, 2012, 2015, and we're now in 2023. So our students are a little behind. Thank you.
Are there any more questions or comments? If not, one thing that I would love to see is a benchmark, a starting point of where the students are at the end of this year, and then a year after we have these boards, let's look at how, how much, you know, what our ROI is, how well this has helped our students perform, because we want to be able to show that this is a good investment, if we're all sure that it is. Okay? Next on the agenda is.
We got to vote.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, so we had the discussion. Now we're back to the vote. So the clerk will conduct the vote. Thank you. Okay, and it passed all yeas, five to zero. And the next topic is the report from the superintendent. Dr. Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and hopefully IT can present. Thank you very much. Excellent job, gentlemen. So, starting with the month of January, our Isle Awards, if we can, next slide. Thank you. Thank you, sir. So, as that's coming up, we present Isle Awards each month, and these are presented in four categories. And, there we are. Thank you kindly. So top left is Mrs. Beth Butner, who grew up in Isle of Wight and supports literacy efforts throughout the county, and she received the Inspire Award. Our top right is our very own. She just presented. Mrs. Susan Getz, Mrs. Getz received the Lead Award, and thank you for all that you do, Mrs. Getz. Bottom left, we have two of our outstanding aides. One is a bus driver, pardon, Mr. Everett Wells, and then a bus aide, Mrs. Doris Gualtney, who supports special needs students on their bus, and they received the Succeed Award. And then the bottom right is Mrs. Andrea May, who is the president of the Education Foundation of Isle of Wight Public Schools, and she received the Empower Award. So to all of our recipients, Mrs. Getz and those who are watching, thank you for all that you do, and congratulations on the various Isle Awards. Yes, we can give them a round of applause. Next, we have our student advisory. I am so proud of these young people, and these are representatives from our secondary schools, our two high schools, our two middle schools, and our sixth graders are represented here from Westside Elementary, and they provide us and me with absolutely a round of applause for those young people, too. That's right. And they provide input on major items that we discuss, our calendar, our safety measures, our capital improvement plan. They provide input and recommendations, and I then convey that to you, Mr. Chair, you, Mr. Vice Chair, and to members of the board. So we meet periodically, and they've just been outstanding. Hopefully before year end, we can get them in here so that they can receive an award of their own because they're certainly deserving. Next, I had the privilege of meeting with this awesome group of people, the Women's Club of Smithfield. This is a, they are a major force, and in the month of January was, I think, education was the major area that they were focused in on, and I was invited in to speak to this wonderful group of individuals. So thank you, Women's Club of Smithfield. Next, well, if we can give them a round of applause as well. Had a chance to attend the Smithfield Windsor High School basketball game at Windsor High School, and also had a chance to recognize one of our former teachers, Mrs. Langford, and her husband, and even though she's a former teacher, they do a lot of supporting of the school, volunteering in a number of ways, so I wanted to acknowledge them, and thank all of our young people for the work that they do, our student athletes and all of their efforts. Had a chance to, sort of a two-for-one that evening, viewing both Smithfield High and Windsor and in the same game. Next, had a chance to meet with this young lady, our president of the NAACP, Ms. Ariane Williams, and not in the picture, he was a second late for the picture, Mr. Derek Boone, our vice president, was there as well. So I had a wonderful meeting with him and look forward to ongoing meetings with our Isle of Wight leaders for the NAACP. So thank you all for what you do, and yes, round of applause for them as well. I had a chance to meet with, and they presented earlier, our CEO of WHRO, Mr. Burke Schmidt. So as many of you know, and some of you may not know, we actually are one of the school divisions that own a percentage of WHRO, so each year they present, and I, as your superintendent, had a chance to visit and tour the facility and have a discussion with them about our usage of their content and the media offerings that they provide our school and our school division. So I wanted to recognize that. Many of you have mentioned, the next slide, VSPA. Mr. Colick and I were there in person. Mrs. Tynes, as she mentioned earlier, had a chance to participate virtually, and I think Mr. Wooster participated virtually as well. And wonderful event. We learned quite a bit about topics such as FOIA, Roberts Rules of Order, and a number of other things. So thank you all, board members, for those of you who are able to participate, and all of us will be invited to future trainings. And next, you mentioned this one. Mr. Colick and I were in attendance at the Tri-Rivers Basketball Game at Smithfield High School against the Plan B Academy. An amazing event, great job by our principals and our administration. They had, administrators, pardon, they had all of the, or a large number of the student body there to cheer these students on, and what an amazing event. I honestly, all my years in education, have never seen anything like it. Unfortunately, today I was in a meeting that ran long, so I missed the event at Windsor High, but next week I expect to see the game at Windsor and Smithfield, and I think that game is going to be held at Smithfield, if I'm correct. So we'll get a chance to make this up to you, Windsor High students. Last night, had a chance to attend, well, let me do this slide first. Had a chance to speak to several classes, as Board Member Tynes and Board Member Cunningham mentioned. I was invited to come into Carrollton Elementary School last week, the Cardinals, and I had a chance to, prior to that, meet with Mrs. Baker's reading class, and I had a chance to speak to several classes and to read to a few classes, Mrs. Wable's class, Mrs. Odom's class, and I had a chance then to speak to Mrs. Lee's class about careers and about what it takes to be successful. And the students were so smart, and they were telling me, here's what it takes, sir, and even though they're only in the third grade, it takes hard work and perseverance, and I didn't tell them that, they told me that, and then we elaborated on that. So thank you, Principal Brennan and staff, for your invitation. And a few things that I was able to participate in, as late as last night and today, as I stated, I was excited to be at the playoff game between Smithfield High School, and I won't mention that other school that's not in our division. Our students, I congratulate them on advancing to the playoffs, so, and I'd like to congratulate all of our student athletes for the playoffs and all that they're doing in addition to their academic studies. Also excited about the opportunity I had this morning with Smithfield High, Smithfield Foods. I was invited to their corporate office, and I had a chance to meet with the vice president for community development, Mr. Evans, and his assistant, a gentleman by the name of Mr. Toms. And we've had discussions about ongoing partnerships and collaboration between our school division and Smithfield Foods, and that was my first time, actually, all the months that I've been here, actually being able to be in their facility. A $20 billion corporation here in our community, and they are discussing ways to extend partnerships, and they've done so much already for our community around CTE and other efforts, and my hope, expectations in theirs is to continue building onto, again, those partnerships which are already in existence. And with that, thank you for the opportunity, and thanks, I didn't have to rush this month, given that we are not at 11:30, so that's a good thing. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer. Next, Dr. Coleman will present the Early Retirement Incentive Program.
Mr. Chairman, the Early Retirement Incentive Program, E-RIP, just for everyone here, I just wanted to make sure that we go through the qualifications for E-RIP to, so everyone can understand exactly what E-RIP is. E-RIP, participants must have worked full-time in IWCS for five years, be at least 50 years old, with at least 30 years of ERS service, or be at least 65 with at least five years of ERS service. The effective date for retirement has to be July 1. If someone retires mid-year, they do not qualify. Employees can elect for employee-only. Employees can elect for employee-only health insurance coverage. They pay the employee cost per month, and IWCS pays the rest. They will also have to complete 25 full days as a substitute within the division. Employees can also elect to not receive health coverage, healthcare coverage, and receive a buyout for the employer cost of health insurance. The E-RIP participant will receive this payment in July. Retirees can participate in E-RIP program for up to five years. They do not have to participate in for all five years. They meet with Human Resources and Finance Department each August to confirm participation. At that time, they will receive payment slips for their monthly health insurance premiums. Now, E-RIP participants must complete their 25 days prior to accepting any paid ESS absences. This is a program that Isle of Wight has been doing for many, many years, so every year, we have to come back, make sure that we present it before the school board, and to get it approved, so we can once again move forward. This is not an action item, just informational, but just wanted to make sure that we presented this for you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next is the Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, sir. I'm just going to stay for any questions at this time.
Are there any questions on the Capital Improvement Plan? Ready to go, Mrs. Tynes.
Sorry, I would like to make a motion to approve the Capital Improvement Plan as president.
Second.
Dr. Coleman, you look like you want to say something.
Yes, we probably need to make sure that we state out exactly what is approved, and in the order that it was approved, so therefore, so everyone knows exactly what we're doing.
Would you like to state that? Would you like to state that issue, the order that was shared?
I don't have that information in front of me at this time.
Did you say we needed to state, I was, I'm asking the question, do we need to state that in the motion?
I don't think we necessarily needed in the motion.
We can say, as decided during a work session.
Right, absolutely. Just wanted to make sure that we stated to be clear, this is it, but it does not need to be stated in the motion.
Mr. Marsh wants to say something.
I think it's worth our time to pull up exactly what we agreed upon at the last meeting, just to say it out loud. It's my opinion.
Okay.
It's in the minutes.
Yeah, it's, now, the exact order, I know that-
We're actually, we're seeing if we can pull that up, and as I recall, I think there were three, the clerk is pulling that up.
Well, we're working on that. Let's go ahead and rescind that motion, and then we'll make a new motion.
Okay.
Do you want to wait until she pulls it up, or did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, we can go ahead and rescind it, and then we'll make the new motion.
I would like to rescind the motion that I just made, and remove it from the floor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
I'm going to do a verbal on this one. Mr. Cunningham?
Yea.
Mr. Wooster?
Yea.
Mr. Colick?
Yea.
Mr. Marsh?
Yea.
And Mrs. Tynes?
Yea.
Okay, so I'm going back into the minutes, just so we can state exactly what was chosen.
I believe it was security mechanisms, the bus garage, and the school.
Well, school safety, fleet services building, and new school. So, you just need to prioritize how you want them in this.
Yep.
But once again, school safety, fleet services building, and new school.
Did you guys want to put that in the motion, or did you want to do the motion like you stated?
No, we'll put that in the motion.
Okay.
Might as well just make it rock solid. It is safety and security.
So, you're going to send a new motion over here?
Bus garage, and a new school.
Yes, sir.
Safety, hold on.
What was the name of that equipment, the security equipment, the pass-through?
The security equipment, remember, we never, I mean, we never went with one name, since we're going to have to do RFP for that. We were trying to stay away from-
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, again, the, was it the order of safety, I think, was moved first?
Yes, sir.
The new school was second?
No, the new school was third.
The new school's third, the garage.
The repair facility, what did we end up calling it? Maintenance facility?
As I recall, the discussion was a transportation facility.
Right.
Correct, and with the intent of sitting down with the county board of supervisors to discuss a possibility of a joint county facility. That's why I want to make sure everybody watching knows what we agreed upon.
Right.
So, it was, number one, we all agreed, with the exception of Mr. Cunningham, because he was not here.
Right.
Number one was security.
Yes.
Number two was transportation facility. No?
Mrs., Mrs., the clerk has it here, let's have her read it, if we may.
And I'm just referencing the minutes that are going to be approved tonight, and it says, Mr. Marsh proposed that we make security number one, the new school number two, then the fleet services facility slash bus garage, with the intent to sit down with the county and ask them about working together to save money.
Right.
The other three board members agreed.
It is so good to have minutes.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. So, we're ready for the motion?
We are ready.
Okay, at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the Capital Improvement Plan to include, one, safety and security, two, new school, and three, fleet services, bus garage.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Then the clerk will conduct the vote.
What do we call the third one, I'm sorry?
The fleet services-
Fleet services was three, the garage, which is the bus garage. I just said bus garage, for those that, you know.
Okay, all right. Pass is five.
Okay, and that passes five zero. Folks, if we can take 10, we'll take a 10-minute recess, folks use the restrooms, and then we will be back here at 8:29.
Okay, the meeting is back in session. And next, we are going to have the proposed 2023 to 2024 school calendar. Mrs. Briggs?
Yes, good evening, everyone. We sent out a draft calendar for feedback, and the calendar was available for students, staff, parents, citizens, anyone to review and to provide feedback. We had 599 responses, which was a good amount. And the majority of them were from parents or parent employees, and then the second category would have been employees. We had 66% that said they were fine with the proposed calendar. We did have 34% that had some recommended changes. And the two dates in particular that came up with recommendations or changes were the two dates proposed prior to Thanksgiving as half-days for students, and that would be November 20th and November 21st. We proposed two half-days, and the students would be there for half a day, they would leave, and we'd have parent conferences on the Tuesday. It would be students there for half a day, and then we'd have a teacher work day. And we did get quite a bit of feedback that people didn't see the value of the two half-days. They anticipated high absenteeism on those two days and suggested that we look at doing something different. And that came from both parents and employees. And just to share, we do, and you heard from a teacher tonight, accreditation is based on attendance. So we certainly don't want to put things in place that encourage families to possibly pull their children from school. So based on the feedback that we got, and already looking at the proposal you have in front of you, we are making a recommendation to change those two days, the 20th and 21st, back to full days like they were this calendar year. This year, Monday and Tuesday were full days for students and staff, and then we'd have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday, which mirrors what we did this year. So while what you're seeing is the calendar people gave feedback on, we're letting you know that we're recommending at least that change for what we bring back to you for a final vote. We do see a value to having those parent conferences, and our instructional team is looking at dates, maybe the week before or the week after, where we could work in a day for conferences, but not tied to those two days prior to Thanksgiving holiday. And those are the main things. I don't know if you have any questions, or you want any additional information. I know this is just first read tonight.
Mrs. Teich?
Thank you. I just have one question. Did we get a, what type of feedback we get on whether to start school prior to Labor Day?
We had 599 responses, and I can probably count on one hand, people that said they'd like for us to consider that.
So only about five?
Five.
Okay, I got you. So then that's out the window. They prefer it after Labor Day. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So therefore, the 599 responses, they will be the ones that we're going to listen to when we've approved this calendar, because the others did not respond. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Marsh?
Ms. Briggs, just to make sure, so the calendar presented November 20th and 21st are grayed out, and you're saying that you're recommending a full day?
Yes, sir. Those would go back to just a white background, which is just a regular school day. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Worcester, anybody?
You know, the only thing I want to do is, you know, reiterate that the only legal holiday that we're not taking off is going to be Columbus Day, and that's actually in the Code of Virginia that that's a holiday, and it's a federal holiday. So that's something that, you know, I would like to see happen, but of course, it's going to be up to the board as a whole. But that's the only issue that I've got with the entire calendar. I think otherwise it looks good.
Yeah, and just to clarify, for those that don't have the calendar in front of them, we do have that day as a student holiday, but we have it as a staff work day.
Right.
Which is what we did this year.
But a question. Chair, I would like to say something.
Yes, Mrs. Teich, please.
Is this one, it's a staff, it's a student's holiday, but I want to, did we have it this year where the staff could work virtually if they wanted to?
I don't think, that day, we do, we did, we did have a day, I think, back in January, one of our days, so we've had some virtual, and we're looking at some others, but it wasn't this day.
Okay.
That was not.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Marsh?
Ms. Briggs and Dr. Kramer, is there anything that would prevent you from wanting to give the teachers that day off as well?
I think we would just have to look, we have to be very careful with our hours and making certain that we are, you know, meeting the needs as it pertains to the state. So if that is something you'd like us to look at, Mrs. Briggs and I can certainly look at that day. Again, we have to be very careful with the number of days, because we have to have so many days that we're in session and so many hours that we need to meet, but we can certainly look at that if that is the will of the board.
If you would at least look at it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes. Yeah, I agree, you should look at it and just make sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Briggs.
All right, thank you.
Next, the proposed bylaws.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the bylaws as presented.
Second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Teich?
Um, Ms. Chair, I had some concerns with those bylaws, because while I was reading through those bylaws, it put me in a zone, and that zone went into a dark zone, because I felt like it was, as an adult, it was, had a lot of restrictions. By the time I got to the end, I felt like I, am I in America, or am I living in a communist country? And that's what I felt like with those bylaws, and that's all I'm planning to say. Thank you.
Okay, I can address part of that. Most of it was actually cut and paste from the policies that we've had in place. There are some things that are not, but a lot of it was from policy. Any more comments? Mr. Cunningham?
Mr. Chair, I have issues with different sections of this. Some of the wording in here needs to be changed. It looks like we're taking, it looks like the school board has taken a lot of the responsibility that the superintendent has. Looks like we're taking over those responsibilities. We have to look at this again before we vote on it, because even what you just said, you copied a lot of it out of other things, other documents. I guess you got it from VDOE, or I don't know where you got it from, but before, I mean, it's 15 pages here, and I've read through this version, this is the version that was put out February the 9th, and I read through another one that was done back in January, and there were changes in this one, but there's still things in here that need, it's wording. Even on the first page, where it says, looking at Section 1-2F, it talks about each member shall remain respectful of the citizens of Isle of Wight County who provide their input through public comments and correspondence to their board members. The word, "they are board members," so they're not supposed to respect the other board members. It's words like that. So, yeah, that's, if you look at that, that's, they, so you're saying, my district, the citizens of my district have to respect me, but they don't have to respect the rest of y'all? That's what, that's what that means. First page, Section 1-2, Purpose of Bylaws and Rules of Procedure. I read this thing two or three times, and I didn't redline it, I blocklined it, but I can tell you right now, I'm not going to vote yea for this one until it's fixed. And I'd be doing a disservice for this board and a disservice for the citizens of my district if I vote yea on this. That's just my comment.
Okay.
I have another.
Yeah, Mrs. Teich.
And one that really, the communication, we did that last year and the year before that, too, restricting me to the communication of only by emails. And I'm gonna, I guess I just want to tell you that, I don't know, some people know this, but there are some people with disabilities, and I am one of those individuals. And my preference, my preference for communication is verbal, because my disability is severe arthritis, okay? And with arthritis, there are times that my hands, I just cannot, you know, manipulate the keyboards, okay? I can barely sometimes manipulate my phone, so this is why I use little pen, you know, to push things on. So my means of communication will be verbal.
Yeah, and there's actually a part in here that calls for that. When an email is not feasible, or is not the best method of communications, phone calls are appropriate. And I'm not bringing this to the board to say, hey, this is what has to be this minute. But I'm bringing it to the board so that we can have a good set of bylaws, and we have some discussion, we make changes that need to be made, and we've got something to work with. It's a single-reference material, instead of trying to scroll through, you know, seven different areas on a website and then look through 32 different policies. Makes this much easier. You know, I forget how many policies we have, but there's well over 100. And that's the purpose that I am presenting this, to make it easier, and everybody would have a reference manual on the board, instead of having policies and having to scroll through policies to see what's what. But I am more than willing to have a session where we can sit down, dissect it, and make the appropriate changes that the majority of board, you know, can live with. It's not John's Way to Highway. It never has been.
We did that previously. I didn't see anything wrong with the bylaws that we had, where we needed a 14-page, we need to, you know, adjust them to a few pages. Like I said, we're professionals, and professionals did the bylaws that were presented earlier until you came with the revisions, and I didn't see anything wrong with those. And we, everything we do here, we have to sit down in a session, sit down in a session. What's wrong with the sessions that were, people sat down in previously? They were professional people, and the people that sat down, I know they were all professionals, certified, licensed by the state of Virginia, and educators.
Well, we haven't had any bylaws since I've been a board member for the last year and two months. We have had a-
We had bylaws last year.
Code of Ethics and Protocols, much different than bylaws. And most of them are incorporated within here, along with a lot of policies on procedures at a board.
So just so I can get my two cents in there, Mr. Chair. Personally, I'm a fan of the bylaws, because I sat on the other side of this table, and I watched this, this board, previous board, pick and choose policies they chose to follow. So I think, and I hope, that a set of governing bylaws will keep the board on a path moving forward. And if there's, if there's areas of concern, like Mr. Cunningham said, I'm absolutely willing to sit down and go through it. I would agree, Mr. Chair, that this should be a consensus, more than a, you know, a majority vote, but I am willing to, I'm ready to vote on the bylaws, but if the desire is to make some more adjustments, I can do that, and I'll yield.
Mr. Worcester, do you have any comments?
I'm just going to reflect the same thing that Mr. Marsh just stated. As with any other policy, I'm not opposed to reworking it, changing language so there's mutual benefit. I do support the bylaws over the policies. I'm looking at right here, and you've got 17 policies, which this actually covers. So it just eliminates the back-and-forth shuffle of paperwork.
Mr. Cunningham, would you be willing to sit down and go through them with me, or Mr. Marsh, or Mr. Worcester, or in lieu of a special meeting?
You know what, it's, it's going to be what it's going to be. We can just do the vote tonight. I don't think it's going to change anything, because I believe what we had last year was good, and I'm telling you, I've gone through page for page on this, and I don't concur with this, but, you know, I'm going to accept what the majority wants, the will of the board. I mean, it is what it is.
Mr. Marsh?
Is there anything burning desire in here that's bothering you, other than a few words? Anything specific?
Yes, a lot of things in here. I mean, see, this thing is not numbered. If you go to Article 3, Meetings, Section 3-1, Time and Locations of Regular Work, Regular Work and Special Session Meetings. All right, look at B, Work Session Meetings. From this, it looks like we're going to have one every month. So that adds an additional meeting. The way this is worded, that adds an additional meeting for this board to attend every month. That's two meetings a month. I mean, I, you know, I know I can make it, but why are we having so many meetings? On the last policy, it stated that we would have a work session if needed, and I agree with that. I don't agree in having a meeting, I mean, you know how, well, both of us were in the military. We had meetings, to plan meetings-
Exactly.
-for the next meeting, and that's what it looks like we're doing here. We're going to, we're putting a meeting that, the way I look at a policy, if it's there, you got to do it. So we don't have a choice. So that, I mean, to me, that's a waste of time, and, I mean, people who work-
Strike that.
Our clerk has to be here, our superintendent has to be here. You know, we got other people who have to be here, too, and that's not being considerate of all the workers that have to be here to support this. I mean, it's, this thing, I just don't see what's wrong with the one we had last, last year, but again, it's the will of the board, so majority rules. I don't agree with this. You already know where I'm going to vote, if we vote on it tonight. I don't see how we're going to fix this. I really don't. Now, that's the bottom line. I don't see how we're going to fix it.
Yield a floor.
Mr. Cunningham, aside from the work sessions, anything else?
Yes, again, we're taking a lot of the responsibilities the superintendent has from him. I mean, that's, okay, right back. I told you, I read through this thing. All right, Article 2, the School Board, Section 2-1, School Division Legal Status. The supervision, last sentence, the supervision of the schools in Isle of Wight County, School Division, is vested in the Isle of Wight County School Board. The daily supervision of the schools is the responsi, now, this is me speaking, the daily supervision of the schools is the superintendent's job and responsibility.
First, what you just read, Mr. Cunningham, is directly out of Constitution of Virginia.
Okay, okay. So that's out of the Constitution, so this, our superintendent, we're taking responsibilities that he has now. So if, all right, so, so from what you're telling me, and I'm not arguing about this, I just know, I know what's right and I know what's wrong. We're taking our superintendent's job, certain parts of his job away from him. Oh, we are?
No.
Okay.
Superintendent is responsible for daily operations of the school system, and we are responsible for oversight of that school system, for the supervision of the schools in the county of Isle of Wight, as stated in the Constitution of Virginia.
So you're saying-
I pulled, I pulled this stuff right out of policy. Okay, I didn't write it.
I don't agree with the way that's written, and I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, I'll look it up myself, because I didn't go into depth on that, but-
All the footnotes and end notes are there for you.
Okay, I need to see that. All right, go to Section 2-3, School Board Powers and Duties. I mean, I've got stars right there. Looking at A, the School Board adopts policy to provide for day-to-day supervision of the schools. Okay, I agree with that, but we have the responsibility of adopting a policy. We delegate the authority for day-to-day supervision of the schools to the superintendent. That's the way it works. This needs to be rewritten, re, it, really, I believe it needs to be thrown out, but, but that's not what we're supposed to be doing. Yeah, we do the policy, but when you put in here day-to-day supervision-
That's, that's our current policy right now in BBA.
I hate to say it like that, but, I hate to say it like this, but what, so what's the superintendent going to do? I mean, if we, if we, we're taking his job, we're taking his responsibilities. We can, we can delegate, delegate authority, but he's got responsibilities. Are we going to take over those- Are we gonna take over those responsibilities?
Absolutely not. And what I'm explaining to you is there would be no change in any roles or responsibilities. This is taking policy, putting it into a bylaw format. These are policies that are in existence today, passed by prior school boards, including some of these policies maybe have passed last year when you were on the school board and you voted for them. Please.
Mr. Cunningham, I'm looking right now at policy BBA, School Board Powers and Duties, last revised June tenth, two thousand twenty-one. The bulletized line items are verbatim. The same ones that are in BBA are cut and past into Section two point three, School Board Powers and Duties. There's nothing new. It already exists. Only we've taken it from a policy and smashed it into a set of bylaws. I yield.
All right. Again, what I said, majority rules. If it is the will of the board, then, I mean, I'm wasting my time talking. And I, I mean, time is valuable. I don't want to waste anybody's time. You already know how I'm gonna vote. Drive on. I yield.
Okay. That ends discussion. Clerk shall conduct the vote. Next, we've got the action on closed session items.
We added an item there.
Okay, we added an item. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I move to nominate Mr. Worcester to replace Mr. Colick on the Finance Committee.
I'll second that. Is there a discussion?
Discussion, yes. Why?
It turns out that if Mr., if the vice chair and the chair sit on the same committee and the majority of the committee, anytime they meet, there must be minutes taken, even during an agenda meeting. We confirm this with the attorney, and therefore, we found it is best to move me off of the Finance Committee. Yes, please.
We've always, the Finance Committee always consisted of the Chair and the Vice Chair. The reason is because finance, that is what makes the school system. Without any funds, we don't have school, okay? It's important in those positions, they hold the response, those individuals will hold the responsibility. As Chair and Vice Chair, you hold that leadership responsibility for this board. I do have concerns because at this point, you're, we're gonna have two brand-new members in that position, meaning they just came on board in December. At least you have been here a year. You understand some things, okay? I do have a concern with that. But like I, like, again, it's the will of the board.
I just want to make sure the board understands that I, the reason why it's a meeting is not necessarily because your status is Chair and Vice Chair, but rather, if there are only two people on the committee, when the two of you meet, there's always a quorum of the committee.
Right.
So therefore, if that's the case, then even when you meet, when you are meeting to talk about meetings, it would be a committee meeting subject to the open, FOIA records. It's up to the board whether or not the board wants to make that switch. That's not what I'm advising on. But to the extent that even if you make the switch and you continue to only have two people on the Finance Committee, when those two people meet, it's still a meeting of the committee.
Of the committee.
And you, it would also be subject to FOIA. So if your intention is to fix that, I don't know if this would fix it, but, you know, but I just want to just make that clear so that the board understands.
Yeah, it would certainly fix it for the agenda meetings, but there could be some unintended consequences. And the only other way that I can see to do it would be to either have a couple of members at a committee who are non-board members or a committee at a whole.
That's right. You can certainly appoint, designate the superintendent as part of the committee or, and/or-
Yeah, we definitely couldn't have the superintendent as a member.
A finance staff.
That'd be a good-
That's up to the board. I'm, you know, obviously, I'm not advising you, the board does that. I'm just saying that would be permissible to, to, as far as a committee of the board concerns, it can contain, the committee can contain non-board members. So for example, the board has CAC, and actually, CAC Committee has parents on the board, and they are considered committee members.
Okay. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to put the superintendent on the spot and solicit some feedback. He's got thirty-some-odd years' experience with this. What say you?
I would defer to the attorney. I think, as he's recommending, even if we make the change with another board member, the challenge that I think we thought we were resolving is still going to be there. So whether it's the Chair and the Vice Chair, or whether it's the Vice Chair and another board member, that's still a quorum, according to our attorney. So I don't think that this is going to rectify what we were hoping for. And I think his recommendation is that we look at different members being on that committee, perhaps with the Chair or with the Vice Chair. So my recommendation would be that we look at a different committee as opposed to just moving different members from the board on that committee. So that would be my recommendation. And we could certainly have a conversation about who those representatives should be from the school division with the Chair, the Vice Chair, or others. So that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. One other thing I want to make clear to the board, too, is that nothing in the law prohibits the Chair and the Vice Chair from exchanging emails to discuss agendas. Now, I understand that there is, there is the notion in Virginia law that if, you know, when three or more board members exchange emails, if it's spontaneous, where it acts more like a chat room, it could constitute a meeting under FOIA. And if you don't advertise accordingly, you'd be violating open records law. But so, but for purposes of exchange and an agenda item back and forth, you know, so long as it's not immediate, like, you know, if you were to send an email to Mr. Marsh and be like, look, these are the agenda items, I'm thinking about putting on this for our committee meeting, and he reviews it and perhaps provide you feedback fifteen minutes later or an hour later, so long as it's not, it's not simultaneous, that would not be in violation of FOIA. And also, it would appears to, it would also appears to be congruous with the board's intent of preserving communications through emails and record. So that's another, that's another thing to, for the board to consider as well.
All right. I think Mrs. Tynes' comments are very applicable.
Ma'am, I would question.
I think your comments are very applicable to have in both the Chair and the Vice Chair. So I think we'll need to move forward and figure out another composition to this. Yes, Ms. Tynes?
Listening to the attorney as well as Dr. Kramer, this committee, two people, can we add a third person? Is there anything that prevents us from adding a third person?
No, the, no, the board-
As long as it's not another board member. Right.
Well, I mean, no, the, no, the board can add another board member, the board can add another third person, the board can, the board can add anyone to the committee at the board's discretion.
Well, I would, I would suggest that we keep it with the Chair, the Vice Chair. As of once we act on our agenda items from closed session personnel, we know we have, Dr. Kramer has hired a new financial director, and I would recommend that that would be the third person to be on this committee.
Now, now, however, let me, let me add this to the caveat. Ordinarily, under FOIA, under FOIA, committee, a committee of the board is not required to keep minutes. However, if there is majority members of the board on the committee, then you must keep minutes. So if you add a third member to, third school board member to that committee, then you must maintain minutes.
So we still have a quorum if we add one more?
That's correct. That's correct.
But what I just said, it would be a third member.
Oh, no, I'm not trying to contradict you, Ms. Tynes. I was just explaining to the board-
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I was just trying to explain the consequences of the different types of members you would add to the committee.
So my recommendation, two board members, Chair, Vice Chair, and a staff member, Director of Finance.
Mr. Chair, if I may, can we have a discussion of how the Finance Committee was composed last year? May I ask a member of our staff to share with us, if I may? Ms. Briggs, do you have a moment to come forward and share with us? Or any member of staff, Ms. Getz? Or, thank you, Ms. Briggs. Would you share with us the composition of the committee from previous years? And I'd like to hear from you, Attorney, if there was a concern with that prior composition.
So my understanding, while I was not a member of the committee, the Finance Committee was composed of our Chair, Vice Chair, and the Superintendent, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors, and the County Administrator. And those individuals composed the committee. So we had our, our representatives that served on the committee, and the county had their representatives to serve on the committee. So by appointing the Chair and Vice Chair, we were appointing them to be part of this larger committee, not just a division committee. And I would default to the previous Chair and Vice Chair if that, if I'm correct in that.
That's correct.
That is, I wish that was explained to us.
Mr. Colick, may I say something? Mrs., Mrs.-
Briggs.
Briggs is correct. It was, that's why I kept referring to the Chair and the Vice Chair. It was the Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent, and the Director of Finance from the School Board. And it was the same thing on Board of Supervisors level. It was the Chair, the Vice Chair, County Administrator, and their Director, or whatever, of Finance, okay?
That makes a lot more sense.
And it was eight people only-
Yep.
-in that room. And, oh, wherever, whenever you all would meet. That's it.
Okay. That was never explained, so I am glad you did. Thank you. And we just need to make sure we capture that for posterity, that everybody is aware it is not a school finance committee, it's a county finance committee. Okay? I appreciate that. While we get beyond that piece, please, Mr. Marsh.
So before we start making motion solid, is it appropriate now to rescind?
Yes.
Okay. That said, Mr. Chair, I move to rescind the motion to nominate Mr. Worcester to replace Mr. Colick on the Finance Committee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? No discussion?
I'm gonna take a verbal on this one, but that's okay. Mr. Cunningham?
Yea.
Mr. Worcester?
Yea.
Mr. Colick?
Yea.
Mr. Marsh?
Yea.
And Mrs. Tynes?
Yea.
Okay, next, we have action on closed session items.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel report as presented, a copy of which can be obtained from the School Board clerk.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No discussion, the clerk shall conduct the vote. The adoption of consent agenda.
Exchange student?
No.
Oh, that's right. That's right. This, yeah, that's right. Next month.
Okay, Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as attached and presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Having heard none, the clerk shall conduct the vote. Next, we have policy updates and revisions. First, we have policy INB for first read. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, and for the folks that are paying attention, INB. So where to start? I wish Mr. Phelps was still here because he said something that really resonated. And I can't quote him, but it was something to the effect of, we need to get back to the civil discourse. And I couldn't possibly agree more with what the man said. No doubt, there are some heartfelt positions on the draft of INB, both sides of the fence. I did get some very constructive and positive feedback from a gentleman in the community. He reached out and he offered me some suggestions on how to reword a few things to make it a little bit, my words, not his, palatable. And I have already in my hot little hands some revisions that make it sound a little bit better, just like we did with policy IIA, tune it up a little bit. Just the last couple of days, I've heard from quite a few of our teachers, and the general consensus that I've received from them is that a lot of the teachers feel insulted, and they feel like some trust issues. I get that. I do. But I wouldn't have presented the draft if I didn't have concerns for some of the stuff I've seen before I've sat up here. And that's been identified a couple of times, several times. I've been accused of bringing politics into the school board. I've been declared a, quote, full-on racist, not much civility in that. I've even had a fellow board member sit up here and make the inference that other members of this board were racist. There is, there's much to be said for civility. We're not always going to agree. We're not. But we've got to maintain some civility. And if for no other reason, to set the example to the kids that are watching. So I'm gonna continue to make some refinements on it. It's not a perfect product. It needs some work. But I will press forward with the spirit and intent of this policy. And for, I'm gonna give you one example. I had a gentleman reached out to me and he said- I had a gentleman reached out to me, and he said, this isn't happening, there's no indoctrination going on, it doesn't make any sense. And he even made an analogy or a metaphor, I forget, I don't know what you call it. He said, it's like making a policy to restrict putting elephants in a gymnasium. And if he's listening, I hope he's paying attention, because I took it to heart. And he's right. Why would you make a policy to prevent someone from putting an elephant in a gymnasium? Doesn't make any sense. Well, on the other side of that coin, today, and maybe it's a poor analogy, I don't know, but I'm gonna use it either way, we've got a policy, let me find it here. We've got policies in place, policy GBEA, that restricts Alawak County Schools employees from using, distributing, manufacturing, or soliciting illegal controlled substances. Now, I'm confident sitting up here saying, we don't have a teacher in Alawak County Schools making drugs or selling them in the schools, but we've still got a policy in place. And if that's an insult to any teacher, because we've got a policy that says you can't make drugs, then I'm sorry. If you're a teacher, and you're not trying to, I'm gonna read it verbatim. If you're not trying to inflict your personal bias, prejudice, or coercion, then this is a non-issue. If you're not trying to promote, instruct, or advance an idea of anything that may be perceived as controversial, then this is, it's a non-issue. Yes, controversial is subjective. What's controversial to me may not be to other people. It's gonna be some good judgment, and I know that our teachers have some good judgment. So I'll get off my soapbox, that's the point of this policy, and I'll work on it, we'll get it posted up for some more public review, and I will bounce it off the fellow board members. I want everybody to have a chew on it, and we're not all gonna agree. But we're gonna move forward, and I yield.
Are there any more comments on this policy, on this draft policy?
Only thing I, the only thing I'm gonna say is, I've, I've only gotten one positive email on this policy. I've gotten at least 25, and I know I'm not exaggerating. I, I'm sure, I don't have my phone out, but I'm sure I'm getting emails right now, not agreeing with the policy. I don't know, I don't know how we're gonna fix it. That's the thing. I don't know how we're gonna fix it. The five of us up here, we're gonna vote on it eventually, but I don't know how we're gonna fix it to the point where the teachers approve of it. And then, the, the big thing is, I think one of the, one of the teachers came up here and said, who's gonna make the decision on, you know, who is doing what? If, I mean, is, is that right? Are you, are you indoctrinating kids? Who's gonna make that decision? Is it gonna be one of us? Is it gonna be the supervisor? I mean, superintendent? Is it gonna be the principal? Is it gonna be the assistant principal? We're, I mean, if we, if we use this policy, somebody's gonna have to make the decision. And, and it needs to be in the policy who's gonna make that decision. A policy is only as good as it is written. And if it's not, I mean, I don't see how we're gonna fix it. If it's not written good, or well, if it's not written well, you're not gonna fix it. I mean, and I don't know. I mean, another teacher came up today and said, if it's, you, you even said about the elephant thing, if it's not broke, why fix it? What's broken here? Are we gonna try to censor what our students are taught? I have a student, I have a son that's in school. I, I tell him what's right. I tell him what's wrong, and he has listened to me, I know, because I've never had the police come to my house and arrest him. I have a good son. And I know a lot of other good kids here, and a lot of good parents out there. They know what, what, what they should do and what they shouldn't do. So, and the teachers out there, I, I have a degree in education. Mrs. Tynes has a degree in education. We were not, we know, we trust the people who work, work for this school system, this division. We, we don't need anything to censor what they're putting out to our kids. Our kids are excelling. Why do we, why do we even wanna take a chance? I'm not saying we're gonna hurt them, but why do we even wanna take a chance of hurting them? And that's, that's just the way I look at it. I mean, I've had a daughter graduated from Smithfield High. She's, she's got her master's degree now. I mean, she went from, uh, uh, she did a two-year college, got a, got a bachelor degree, now she's got her master's. She's a great kid. Well, not a kid, she's 28 years old. So, I mean, she's not out there robbing banks, or, or making drugs, or doing anything. I mean, we got good kids here. We, we, we got a few problems, but you know what? Policy INB, I don't see how it's gonna fix it. But again, this is just me. This is the way I look at it. It's my view, I'm one number. I yield. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Tynes?
I agree with Mr. Cunningham, and I have a daughter as well, and she graduated in the same class as Mr. Cunningham's daughter. She's now a college graduate in grad school. And I track some members of that class, and they're all doing well. Some of the students that we have, the last, uh, eight, the, the eight years I have served on this board, well, I'm gonna say seven years, I've, I've completely served, those students are doing well. I haven't heard of anyone being incarcerated, or, or, you know, murdered someone, or, you know, things like that. I'm, I say that to say this, it's not broken. Do we have to fix all of these policies? It's like, I'm looking at them like, it's broken. Someone thinks it's broken because they keep coming back with all of these revisions and all these changes. As a matter of fact, we normally don't even look at these policies, because they stay here for at least five years before we go back and say, hey, we need to update them. And that's when we start making revisions if we need to, okay? But sometimes we don't have to. Sometimes we might tweak a word, one or two words, and, and move forward. It's not like, I, I've heard that, I, I hear a lot, the previous board, the previous board. I was on the previous board, and I was on the board before that. And even before that, there were boards before that, and there were boards before that. These policies encompasses what all of those boards has been doing for years and saying for years, that this is what we want the students and the staff of Alawak County Schools to follow. Okay? And why do we have to make all of these changes? What is the issue now? What are we trying to fix? Nothing is broken. These kids are acceler, these kids are graduating. We graduate over 500 kids a year from Alawak County Schools. They're going out into the world. The young lady we had here tonight, Mrs. Vivian Green Brown, pro basketball. We have some others out there, I'm not even gonna call their name, if you only knew the things that they were out there in the world doing, and they came from little old Alawak County, okay? People want to come into Alawak County. They want to bring their children here, professional people. I've got emails from them, doctors, attorneys, engineers. They want to bring their families here to live, because they want their children to be educated in Alawak County. And it's, and it's about the staff that we have in place. I'm sure they don't care about the school board members, because we come and go, but they know we have a good staff in place, that, that will be there to teach their students, I mean, their children. I yield to anybody, thank you.
Dr. Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, I, I do think I would be negligent as superintendent if I did not speak on behalf of our teachers. I think the group that is going to be affected by this more than anyone else are the teachers. So I would implore you to at least, and I'm sure you will be amenable, to feedback from our teachers. So you mentioned, you know, receiving input from the board members. If you would allow my staff and I to have an opportunity to support you with receiving feedback from our teachers, I would greatly appreciate that.
Dr. Kramer, absolutely. One of the suggestions I got from a gentleman, he said that rather than, like, and I don't know how, you guys didn't see the current version that I've got, but several of the bullets say, shall not, shall not, shall not. His suggestion was to take the not out, and to, to rephrase it with a, a positive. Spirit and intent being the same, but switch it around so it sounds positive. And so I, I'm more than welcome to play with that and figure out a way to make it better. So yes, I just wanna make sure that the spirit and intent of this does not get lost, and I yield.
Mr. Wooster, do you wanna say anything?
I think everything's pretty much been covered at this point.
Okay, well, I'll just say a couple of things. I thought the speakers that came out tonight, several of them made some, what I thought was some very good points. I took a lot of notes, and I just appreciate everybody coming out. We, we should be able to get through this to make sure it is beneficial to the school system if it's adopted. And I hope that the teachers will provide some good substantive feedback. I think they will, they've, they've been very receptive so far. Next, we'll go into policies for second read. We'll start with IIA.
To make motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve policy IIA as presented.
Second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion, the clerk shall conduct the vote. And it carries three to two. Next, second policy, or, excuse me, policy for second read is policy FFA.
Mr. Chair, before I make a motion, I'd have a few comments, if you'd allow.
I've gotta make the motion, then we can go on to discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve policy FFA as presented.
Second.
And do we have any discussion? Mr. Marsh?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So if you recall back in December, when we were talking about FFA, Mr., excuse me, Pak, Mr. Pino, what time is it?
Thank you.
I'm working on it. Mr. Pak, when we were talking about policy FFA, he said that if we were to rescind the policy, we should give you notice. So I did say back in December that I was gonna do it, and then we, we deferred this discussion because of, I think it was just time constraints. So on that, and I know that we've got a motion on the table, this isn't a motion, but I intend to do so. So I don't know if we should do that on top of the existing motion, or after. Okay. So then on that, I yield.
Is there any further discussion? There is no further discussion, the clerk shall conduct the vote. It passes, three to two. Now, I've got parliamentary question for the attorney. Would this be a point for Mr. Marsh to proceed with the motion that he wanted to make, or would we be required to put that on an agenda for a later meeting? Since it's directly a result of this policy.
I, I think it could be appro, it's related to this policy, I think it would be appropriate if the board wishes to correct, if, if the purpose of the motion is to correct an error.
Okay. Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Chair, on that, I move to rescind this school board's previous action on September 8th, 2022, which had proved a resolution renaming the Career and Technical Education Building located on Smithfield High School campus after Dr. James D. Thornton, on the premise that this previous action took place using an incorrect version of Alawak County Schools' policy FFA.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Tynes?
Yes, I would like to say again, when we took action and named that, to name the building, the facility after Dr. Thornton, we put it out there, and, Mr. Chair, you were part of that discussion, you agreed with it as well. All of us were in the same place. We did not know at the time that there was another policy out there. We even reached out to our attorney. We did not do anything wrong. And for us to rescind something that we have named after a gentleman, and the reason it is there, I heard someone said tonight that it's there because of someone else, no, uh-uh. Dr. Thornton himself was the one out, he went out and got the funding for that building from Smithfield Foods, okay? The principal didn't do that, it was Dr. Thornton. And it's, I, I've also heard someone come up here before and said, but what if he goes out there and get in trouble? Well, people have gotten in trouble before, and things were named after them. We have, we've had people to get, uh, to be sitting in the seat of the highest office of the United States. Name come up, but we don't take things from them. The, the board that was sitting at the time did not know, which included you, as chair, that there was another policy out there. So I don't feel like we did a wrong, okay? If we had knowingly did something wrong, hey, by all means, I'm guilty, I got caught, let's make it correct. But we did not knowingly do anything wrong, so why are we trying to rescind something? Why are we trying to keep that action from going forward? Please do not let personal feelings get in place. Put those feelings aside, because you dislike someone. Did that person ever do anything to you personally? No. But I just dislike them because of the way they look? That's, that's childish. Therefore, I'm going on to say, I'm against rescinding. I'm not, I am against that. I think we should go forward and keep his name on that building. Going forward, going forward with the policy, now that we know that is in place, we will not do it again. But you're going back in the past to do something that we, the board at the time, did not do any, knowingly, we did not do anything wrong. It was just a mistake. So we need to grandfather that mistake and go forward and leave Dr. Thornton's name on that facility. That's all I have to say, and I yield.
Is there, Mr. Marsh?
Mrs. Tynes, I would, with respect, request you not make presumptions about why I'm making the motion, or, or rather assume that I'm doing it because I do not like the man. It's got nothing to do it, do with it. I made the motion because it is my conviction that this school board cannot pick and choose which policies we would, we adhere to. So for me, it's a matter of principle. It's got nothing to do with Mr. Thornton. It's a matter of principle. Regardless of how the mistake was made, it was made. So that's where I'm at with that, and I yield.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, the clerk shall take the vote.
I take a verbal, Mr. Cunningham?
Nay.
Mr. Wooster?
Mr. Worcester?
Yea.
Mr. Colick?
Yea.
Mr. Marsh?
Yea.
Mrs. Tynes?
Nay.
Okay, it has passed. Next, we have Regulation EEAB. Dr. Coleman, if anybody has any questions? This is on school bus scheduling and routing. Are there any questions? There are no questions, Dr. Coleman. Next, the citizens' comments on non-agenda items.
In accordance to policy BDDH-E, presentation of information on any subject will be concluded at the discretion of the board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time for their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking are asked to be specific, state the issues for the board's consideration, and attach a copy of your prepared remarks. If you have prepared remarks, they should be given to the board clerk. Please do not approach the board members. Any matter relating to specific students will be heard by the school board only in a closed meeting. First, we have Ms. Heidi Swartz.
Well, I'm going to reiterate something that I was just, that was just said, but there's been a lot of interest of policies, and that was just said that you can't pick and choose which policies are going to be followed, so I'm just going to reiterate a GABA policy. It's regarding social media, specifically can't be friends with students and using defamatory on social media. Just wanted to put that policy out there in regards to some things that were going on. By reviewing documents, I have, I'm going to talk about policy GAH, but by reviewing some FOIA, some FOIA documents recently, I noticed one specific teacher, Mr. Benjamin Phelps, solicited the central office to contract with the school to teach other teachers how to help students pass SOLs. This sure seems to directly violate school-employee conflict of interest, which is known as the policy GAH. It prohibits school employees from having a personal interest in certain contracts and transactions that involves a division. It prohibits using confidential information that employees have acquired by reason of an employee's public position and which is not available to the public, and they should be referred to the Ethics Council for assistance. It appears from the FOIA documents that the school system may not have contracted with the employee's company or allowed him to use its facilities. If they did, then all FOIA documents that I requested were not received. However, it is alarming that three senior central office employees didn't immediately direct their employee to the COI policy. What I do know is that the employee used their school-issued email to continue to solicit their private business to at least three senior central office employees over months. Also, did the employee not gain the specific information about SOL testing through their position as a teacher in the county, information that is not available to the general public? Additionally, the employee infers that they were holding a meeting related to their business with another educator at another school facility on a date that was still a teacher and student workday. Did the employee have permission to use a school facility to further their business interests? This also would seem to conflict with policy GAH. I'm not against employees creating businesses and other forms of income to supplement their salaries. Many do in our area, and I directly even support them. However, those businesses should not produce a clear conflict of interest, though in this particular situation, it even appears to take place on division's time and division's property. The school system was to have all teachers in a grade level across the county collaborate on SO improvement where they need to compensate this employee but not the others. Would this employee be allowed to excuse themselves so that they did not harm their own business interests? You can see how this could quickly get messy. As a parent who's had my child's private education shared by an employee of Islewhite County recently, which I had to take up in a report to the BDOE, I care about policy GAH, especially when it comes to the example of stating using the employee's own economic benefit with confidential information that the employee has gained in their public position. I'm hoping that Dr. Kramer, central office, and the board make sure that employees of Islewhite County Schools are not in contract with Islewhite County School Division, and that employees are not soliciting nor using their positions of Islewhite issued email and school time of private information from students to further private business or share confidential information. Thank you.
Mr. Ozil?
Michael, of the Hutter District. First, I want to recommend our new board members, and hope that y'all could see, get some confidence this year to the new board members. Just take a little time, I think, understand how the operating of the school goes, and then come out and voice your concern, because I know that at one point, we all going to get together on one point or another to get things done. But at the beginning, it's just like going to a new job. You just don't jump at a job, you don't know too much about the job, so at times, you can sit back and see how the job operates. And that way, I think everybody will be on the same page, because right now, things up in the air on all ends, on all where. So I just want to congratulate the new board members and the vice chair and vice chair, and I'm looking forward to working with you as always. My mom always ran here somewhere, but I work with anybody who wouldn't work with me. So, and I do believe we can get something done. It does take your time for the, like I said, new board members, go back and look at some things, and then come out and voice your concern, and I think that's what we will look at more professionally, that way than just to go start and change the things at the beginning. Because like I said, when you, in the beginning, you start new, you don't know too much about it. Actually sit and see how things operate, then gradually bring your changes, and I think then that way, we all could be on the same page. And I thank you for your time.
I really like that guy. Yeah, he's really good.
Valeria Harris?
Straight shooter.
Rhonda Bradby? That's it, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for speaking this evening. Next, we have board member requests and comments. Who would like to start it off? Mrs. Tynes?
Thank you. My first one, I guess, is a comment, and it was brought to my attention today, and I'm just bringing it up because there were some parents out there concerned, and I'm hoping these parents are watching us tonight. It was, they, it was, the concern that was brought up today was from the parents that their middle school age students, children, were sent to survey. And the concern was, the parents did not receive the survey, but if the board members, maybe Mr. Cunningham would remember, it was mentioned by staff that that survey was going to come out from the state of Virginia. And at the time, the middle school, the middle school admin sent out notifications to the parents that it was going to happen. That notification did not come like it normally come in a district form, it came from the middle school itself. And that was the survey. It wasn't anything, because the parents were concerned about it, that was a state of Virginia survey, it was called the Virginia School Survey of Climate and Working Conditions, and it was the school version, grades six through eight. So I don't, a lot of the parents said, y'all sent that out, and it didn't have anything to do with Islewhite County School Board or Islewhite County Administration, Administrative Office. It was sent from the state of Virginia, and the only part that we handled was what they asked us to do to notify the parents, and the parents were notified by the middle school staff. Thank you. I would also like to, I forgot to order the audit that we heard tonight, thank them for the audit, because I've been sitting here, and I've been hearing within the last year, I've heard a lot of negative things about funding, and, you know, it makes, you sit here sometime, and you really can't talk, you can't speak up, you can't explain what you need to explain to people, and it sounds like we have taken some money, did not appropriate the money, the funds appropriately, but when you hear, heard the audit of tonight, you heard, just like we heard, it did not happen, okay? Everybody was paid, they're supposed to be paid, and how they're supposed to be paid, okay? And we're, we did not run short. Thank you. That's all I want to say on that. And one other thing, I heard the superintendent's report tonight, I heard board chair said he had a nice time. I don't know if we got, I don't know if we got it or not, I'm not sure, it could have come out, I don't know. But the next time, something special like the basketball game with the special needs students, please let us know, because I would have been there, okay?
Actually, I just found out about this a day or two before the first game I went to. It was brand new to me. I guess the teams have been going on for about six or eight years. There is going to be a game next Thursday morning at 10:30 at Smithfield High School between Smithfield and Windsor, and I will be there.
Next Thursday morning, hold on, 10:30?
10:30 in the morning. It is really fun.
Yeah, because I would like to support, you know, that group of students.
Absolutely.
Because we got, the night basketball games or football games, you get lots of citizens out, but these are played during the time when a lot of the parents are working or whatever, and I'm retired, so I can show up.
You would have a blast.
And you said that was the 16th, right?
I believe so, yes, it's on Thursday.
What time?
10:30 AM.
Got you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, we will make certain, Ms. Briggs is still here, that in our weekly update, we'll highlight what those events are. I think we've tried to do that, but I think we can be a bit more clear and concise in that, so I take ownership of that.
Not going to blame you.
I blame myself, so we'll correct that.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer.
Y'all put it all up, and y'all had your little photo shot, and we didn't know about it, just the two of y'all.
Doc, it is, gets captured in Mr. Kramer's, the end of it, but it's kind of buried in there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Mrs. Tynes?
That's it, thank you.
Yes. Who's next? Mr. Cunningham? Go for it.
I really don't. I think I've spoken enough tonight, but, but the thing is, some of these things we're doing, we need a suspense on, like where we're going to get for I and B, policy I and B, we need comments from the teachers, or you need comments so you can draft it a little differently. I'd like to see, like a suspense, saying, okay, can I get comments in the next two weeks, three weeks, whatever the case may be? Because if we just throw it out there, then, you know, somebody may think, I got, I got a month to make comments. So, I mean, this is just a recommendation, you know, when we, when we come up with something, if we're not going to have a meeting between now and the next board meeting, then let's have a suspense on when we need comments in. Easy. That's all I have. Have a great month. Valentine's Day next week, do not forget. Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Marsh?
Good.
Mr. Worcester?
Yeah, I just want to take one moment, talking about policy IIA, and I want to thank Mrs. Getz for working with me on this policy from the last meeting, taking the time out of her schedule to come up with, you know, acceptable wording where it maintained the integrity of the policy, but at the same time, you know, providing a safety issue for the A and P and honors programs. So I just want to take a minute and thank you, Mrs. Getz. That's all I've got.
And I will be the last one, it looks like. Mr. Cunningham, that idea of suspense date, I think, is spot on. So if I could ask you two gentlemen to work that out, so that we can, everybody on the board can have a chop on it before it goes up for second read, that would be very helpful. And again, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. I want to thank everybody that provided comment tonight during both comment sessions. We're going to have a change in format at next month's meeting, very slight, but it will be noticeable. All the comments will be on the front end of the meeting, we won't be saving them until 10 o'clock at night any longer. The timeframe will still be four minutes. Yes.
I would like to thank all of the schools, Westside Elementary, Carrollton Elementary, Carsville Elementary, did I miss any? Smithfield Middle School for the packages they sent out to us on behalf of school board month.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I did that because I'm the female here, you know, okay? Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. But we would like to thank all of them very much.
And this meeting is adjourned.